Clifford Colmeyer.
Here.
Lisa Lester.
Here.
Zach Marlowe.
Here.
Sue Nance.
Here.
Rusty Orrick.
Here.
Scott Stanfield.
Here.
Fourteen present, one absent.
I will state that we do have a forum. Again, I will do the chairman's comments. As of last month, the commission workshop time limit was set for an hour and a half. And when we get again, we can sit to seven thirty. Extension of the workshop, about thirty minutes, requires a motion and a second to be voted on by a simple majority of the Campbell County's present. If you wish to extend it, you can extend it thirty minutes, but you'll take the majority of it. Like last month, public comments will be moved to the end to ensure that a citizen has the opportunity to address the commission on items placed on the agenda. Committee, prior to an issue coming to the commission, it needs to go through the appropriate committee. During public comments, if we need to send an item to the committee, it will be done at the recommendation of the chairman. If we should run out of time, then I'll recommend that it go to a committee which will give that individual an opportunity to discuss it, you know, a little longer. If you have questions, please write them all down, like we did during the budget and finance. I appreciate that. That way, we give you three minutes to talk, and at that point, you're finished, and we can move on. Please understand that any time a commissioner wants to speak twice, he must have a motion and a second to poll the commission as to whether or not to give him or her additional time, which means you can't get additional time, but you'll have to hold this body for that extension. Okay, moving on. Mayor? I've had several questions about the Oakwood settlement. I think you had gone to some community meetings and stuff, and had talked a little bit about it and everything, and people were asking myself, and I think some other commissioners, how much money are we getting? You know, is it coming from, is it going to be the state settlement, or is it going to be from the Jesse and Jesse, or is it going to be both? If you could, and like I said, I don't want to hold you up, but if you could, if you could email that, just with a brief description, that would go to the commission, that way, when we're asked, everyone will know.
Mr. Chairman. Can we request that our attorney, Jesse and Jesse, be here next month to go over this? We need an update.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on.
That'll be my suggestion.
Thanks, sir. All right. Talking to the media. I'd like to thank the Volunteer Times for videoing this live. Also, I'd like to thank WLF for having it on tape delay. I think that the citizens, either Washington, they know exactly what we're saying, and so forth. In saying that, my mother told me a long time ago that there's always two sides to every story, you know, and it's best that you get both sides, because she said, once you get both sides, she said, you find the truth in the middle and stuff. So, please, you know, if we have a difference or whatever, hey, let's talk through it and see if we can't reach that middle somewhere.
Chairman.
Move it quick, Mr. Kent.
We also need to acknowledge the LeFollette Press as well.
Thanks, sir.
You've acknowledged, thank you.
Moving on down, commissioners. Speaking of that, we, if we could, the accomplishments that these individuals have done throughout the four years, I think they should be mentioned, and I think those things need to be published so people in their district know what they're doing. Okay? So, in saying that, First District, Mr. Whit Goinz, Mr. Robert Higginbottom, Mr. Zach Marlowe, you are to be commended for working with TWRA to give courtesy docs in the First District, and working to ensure the Wells Springs Convenience Center is open seven days a week. The people of the First District should feel grateful that they have three commissioners working diligently to better their district and all of Campbell County. Moving on. Second District, Mr. Scotty Kitts, Mr. Rick Colmeyer, and Lisa Lester, you are to be commended for your work with the Road Superintendent Ron Billback to get guardrails in the Davis Chapel Community, and for continuing to press T-DOT to make sure Highway sixty-three is fixed both timely and properly. The people of the Second District should feel grateful that they have three commissioners working diligently to better their district and all of Campbell County. Third District, Mr. Dewayne Baird, Mr. Rusty Orrick, Mr. Scott Stanfield, you are to be commended for your work to get a new road to the Anvil Shelter. I think that's been long overdue. Also, your efforts to get the campground and courtesy docs out at the Lonish Young Park. It's my understanding that the bid for the road and the campgrounds were approved by the FMS on January the thirty-first, so we should see things going there. And in saying that, the people of the Third District should feel grateful that they have three commissioners working diligently to better their district and all of Campbell County. Fourth District, Mr. Go Bear, Ms. Sunan. Again, I gotta say, this is my favorite district, I mean, what can I say? You are to be commended for your support and effort to secure fifty thousand dollars in funds for the Lions Club to aid in the building of the ADA playground in Carable. The city of Carable should also be commended for this, as they have also aided in this project. Additionally, you are to be commended for your continued work in support of paving roads in the Fourth District. The Fourth District should feel grateful to have commissioners working diligently to better the Fourth District and all of Campbell County. Fifth District, Mr. Ralph Davis, Mr. Mike Douglas, Mr. Tyler King, you are to be commended for your work in purchasing the Jellicle Annex Building, which we were paying monthly rent on, and your work to purchase a piece of property that are joined the Annex Building. This initiative will ultimately save the county's money we are paying out in rent each month, and allow us to better serve the citizens of the Fifth District. The Fifth District should feel grateful to have three commissioners working diligently to better their district and all of Campbell County. Okay? Also, I'd like to commend the Communications Committee, Mr. Rusty Orrick, Mr. Scotty Kitts, Mr. Zach Marlowe. A big thank you to you three for meeting with Comcast and Highland Communications. It's my understanding that they both seem willing to expand in Campbell County if they can get the grants that they're applying for. And most importantly, they do not seem to want, or at least they did not directly ask for county funds. They're going to do it on their own, do the grants, so that is actually what we're saying. The citizens should feel grateful to have commissioners and a communication committee that is working tirelessly to try to expand crawl band. Thank you, guys. Thank you for meeting, because I know, listen, I know y'all spent several hours before. Also, Mr. Rusty Orrick, Mr. Zach Marlowe, Mr. Robert Higginbottom, Mr. Ralph Davis, a big thank you goes to you guys for the work that you did out at the Scale House, you know, as far as the wiring and so forth out of Coast Spring Road. You're to be commended for that. You came in after hours of stuff of work, and we greatly appreciate it. Other notes. A big thank you also goes out to the municipalities for understanding and working with us during the last few snowstorms. We had some issues that came up, and hey, they worked, they worked through it with us. Also, commissioners, if you have not already, go around and visit all of your convenience centers and see how efficient they are operating. If you have not been, you will be very surprised, I'm telling you, to everyone. You need to go by and look at the compact, because let me tell you, the sites, I can't wait for them to roll in, and everything's up and running good, because this looks so much cleaner, it looks really good. That concludes the chairman's notes for this month. We can start by filling our agenda for next week, okay? We look at approval of previous minutes, there is, they should be in your folder. Lowering public application approvals, committee reports in minutes, those will be the budget finance, recreation, sanitation, building and grounds, communications, FMS, infrastructure, sanitation, head shirts, and personnel. Please look through those for next month. Approval of budget amendments and other funding resolutions, those we went through tonight, I think we have twelve one through twelve thirty. Approval of repayment of the monthly travel credit card use, I think that's due a balance of both the mayor's and the county's management. I think that'll probably change towards next month, because we have several to be going on now. Okay? Reports from county officials and all departments, including Board of Education. Reports on coordination to seeking funding from this county. Information purposes only is on page one twenty-one. Amanda, what is that? Don't have anything? Okay. Other matters. Revisiting the county's mileage reimbursement rate to parallel the rate established by the state of Tennessee and the IRS, fifty-eight point five cents. Uh, I don't know if it's thirty-fourty-seven now, is it? Forty-six, forty-seven? Okay, there we go. We need to look at that. Rust?
Who?
Mr. Orrick, I think you have the, the second one there is interlocked, inter-local government agreement for water line extension projects. We'll be adding that to yours.
Yes, if you want to speak, I'll wait for my.
Wait till your turn, you know, Amanda.
Number one is coming.
Uh, who'd like to carry number one?
I don't mind a period, but can I make a call now?
And I want to get your turn, Mr. Kent. Mr. Kent will carry it?
Yeah.
Zach will carry that, okay, very good. Okay, number three, Campbell, CS, that's TNTP, that's service agreement, T-DOT early network, I guess. We need someone to carry that one, too?
I don't mind to do that, since I'm here with the education.
Okay, thank you, Zach. So Zach will carry one and two, Rusty will carry, I'm sorry, one, three, Rusty will carry two. Okay, moving on down, recognizing the county mayor. Mayor, I know she had several things on here. Several people that are on this list to speak are going to be speaking on this, on these topics, correct?
Good news, I hope you have some of that soon. Just got word today from TWRA, about thirty minutes ago, that TWRA gained a thirty-seven-hundred acre donation to expand Little Cumberland Wildlife Management Area, and its portion of acres directly overlooking Carable and Cove Lake, and more likely includes where everybody knows the curve of flat. We get a copy of it.
I noticed they were sitting a little bit, just kept on looking at them.
There's copies for everybody there. That's just today, so I will be sending in a letter of occurrence, we're expanding the Wildlife Management Area. There's no past words that I can get to be heard, so I'm going to go over here next to three, just covering my portion, so everybody can hear. So that's good news, expanding our public lands. Additionally, put February twenty-second, next week's meeting date at noon, please put that on your calendar. The public's invited. The Tennessee Build Dance Signature Lakes Trail is coming to Campbell County. Tennessee's Build Dance, in partnership with Tennessee Tourism, TWRA, and TBA, has agreed to lend its name to promote our fisheries, improve the fishing experience, fishing quality, and enhance economic growth statewide. As Governor Lee's Rural Representative to the Tennessee Tourism Committee, I was honored to ask for lake and stream enhancements across rural Tennessee, like this project to grow Tennessee facilities for local fishermen and their business. I was also honored to nominate Lonish Young Park as Campbell County's first Build Dance Signature Launch Site. For that end, on February twenty-second, we're going to see the whole Build Dance Signature Lake Series presentation in the criminal courtroom. So, Tennessee Tourism, TWRA, and TBA are expected to be there, and we invite everybody. So it'll present the program, and then allow Q and A, and then they want to go out on the ground and see Lonish Young. And Dennis Hummel will be the representative from Tennessee Tourism, and I already took him to the park on one trip, and we also visited the Murble Site. So, there are some funds that are coming available for improvements. Lonish Young is pretty strong, and we know we've got an improvement plan underway there. So, that could be the first of multiple sites with this program. So, Campbell County High School Fishing Coach, Gabe Keane, said he hopes to attend, and all fishing coaches, fishing teams, public, everybody encouraged to attend. So it'll be an ongoing conversation as these develop. There are sixteen different lakes that are already designated across the state, so we're looking very forward to watching that grow. Saturday, moving on to the next topic, we actually had demolition job completed at Hatfield Knob, and took the old LQ tower down, and so we'll be underway getting concrete for, we think, in the next two and three weeks for the footer, and the steel erectors should be on site in the next month, to put the steel structure up, start pouring, and get the ADA ramp completed. Very good news on those fronts. I've got some guests here to talk about, some grant opportunities for the county, and I think we're going to start tonight with, uh...
Mayor, if you, if you, okay, if you don't mind, just stay just a little while with this and stuff, and that way we'll give you more time to talk and stuff, if that's okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Would you be okay with you going? Yeah.
Okay, so, senior citizens home assistance service had a request, a good program, and we've got several folks here to talk about that. Campbell County Rural Fire Service grant is already on my portion, so Mr. Kitts carrying that. We have a health department upgrade grant proposal, and Charles here at the health department, and a home grant. Delph is here to talk to you about the home grant, and upgrading homes here in Campbell Now that we have the final guidance out on the ARP funds, I will be recommending a dollar an hour supplement to essential workers, county government, for EMS, EMA, sheriff's department, medical examiner, sanitation department, building and grounds, and health department employees, and then the remaining courthouse fee offices, election commission, finance, IT, commission secretary, mayor's office, veteran affairs, and Lonish Young Park, senior citizen center, our telephone technician, and historical society workers at fifty cents an hour for the effective period.
Second, you got all them. Is that it?
Two more, I was, we were at the JDCB the other night, LeFollette Mayor Philip Farmer announced that we've been told we're no longer recycling sanitation.
Can I speak on that, Mr. Chairman?
Two, Mr. Kent, seven, you can talk.
So, just need to know that we've announced that.
Do you want to speak on it? I'm sure you'll have what we can do.
We're going to be back in our K-12s with our control program that teaches based on recycling.
Mr. Chairman?
Just a second.
All right.
And then TDAC sent out a letter they called this afternoon, and they gave us a window for some compliance on air curtain instructions. They asked me to make your way.
Mr. Kitts, you have some, who has questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Mr. Davis?
Mr. Orrick?
Excuse me, guys, sorry about that. Okay, Mr. Kitts, you have four.
Thank you. I'd like for you to go in just a little bit, Delph, if you would, Mayor, on the sanitation issue, if you don't mind.
Well, just announced at the JDCB the other night that we told LeFollette we're not recycling.
Okay, and the time on the fishing thing, when you got it going, what time is it? It's February twenty-second.
Noon here in the courthouse, and we'll move out.
And when we're, when you're speaking about, I'm a hundred and ten percent for it, were we, were we going to get the money to pay ARP money? What do you want to, were you going to get to pay everybody the raises and stuff, the essential rate?
ARP money is authorized for that.
And you, did you get a total amount for this body, so we'll know about how much that would be, or?
The final guidance put a limitation on how much spending it does in approach there.
Did you get a total on everything that we needed?
We'll have to look at paper records and see how many hours folks work, but it doesn't approach the limit.
All right, Mr. Chairman, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, you have four.
Okay, on the raises, which I think Mr. Orrick and his committee, they already brought up to, they're looking to give the whole county a seventy-five cent raise, worked it out through finance. If you talk to finance about the, where you're going to get the money to give your raise?
The ARP fund.
Yeah, but that's, that's a one-time thing, that's not, I know if you give a raise this year, you got to come up with the money next year, correct?
No, it's just something.
Okay, all right. But the commission's already to do that. Now, on the recycling, the reason that we don't take Jack's Burrow, some of them's recycling, we take everybody's, but when you bring a hundred pounds of cardboard and four hundred pounds of garbage, we're not going to help our people go through it. Jack's Burrow brings, city and area, they pick up, in our understanding, I've talked to some of the citizens, they pick up cardboard on Tuesday, and on, when Tuesday comes, they just put garbage in it. It's been told, they even done it, we can use over it, because I've went in there, there'd be tons of garbage in there, more than cardboard. So, yes, we recycle, but we don't take garbage, that ain't recycling. So, we've been taking pictures, anybody out there that's got cardboard, you bring it to the county, but don't go around in your truck and pick up household garbage with it too, that ain't recycling. These are employees, we're not going to ask them to reach in there and rip over a bag of garbage with needles and dirty diapers, it goes to the landfill, not inside that building for them to handle. When they clean up their garbage, they can dump it in there. Bring us cardboard, that's all we ask, so.
So, we just recycling cardboard?
Well, what would you do with garbage, Mayor?
Aluminum?
Yes, all of it. But when, when they take a truck and pick up cardboard and reach over and pick up the garbage with it, and bring it in there and dump it, we can't take that, that's not recycling.
Well, I agree, but we ran a picking table when I was supervising sanitation.
Right, and, and we had rats big enough up there to eat a groundhog. But what I'm saying is...
Recycling, all plastic recyclable.
Right, but not household garbage, not household garbage.
Are we still recycling?
Yes, we're recycling, you bring anything, but bring it clean.
LeFollette's not bringing it.
No, well, they're dumping it up on the hill, because we want to allow them to dump it inside the building, because it's half garbage and third cardboard, or whatever, it's, it's unsafe. It's contaminated.
Are we recycling?
Yes, we're always been. We just refuse to let them take theirs.
That's what I'm saying, we need to make a separate public announcement, because you got a city mayor that has been told that we're not recycling.
Mr. Kent, you have twenty seconds.
All right. I had a meeting last year, about all the mayors, this courthouse, to go over it. They did not want to work with us. It turned into a horse show. They did not want to cooperate. One mayor says, I'm not going to have my employees go through that garbage, you have yours. So if they want to bring their cardboard and their recyclables, bring them, but don't, don't throw the household garbage in there, we'll take it. It's as simple as that.
Okay. Mr. Orrick?
The land that you was talking about on North Cumberland that TWRA got, that's the old McCalls Lindsey land property, so that company out of Georgia retained this back to TWRA.
There was a nonprofit out of Blunt County that had it.
It actually is out of Georgia. I was, I was born and raised right in that community. The, the other thing, the COVID, and this relate on the garbage, the COVID stopped a lot of recyclings across the state, it did. We can't, can't handle recyclables and end up getting COVID, so that stopped at that time. At that point in time, we started back, and Ralph's right, I've actually been out and looked at some of the trash that's been brought from some of the cities, and it's a mixture. We don't do business that way, and they've been told, and I'm, I'm sure Mr. Farmer, I was going to speak, but I didn't want to get in your meeting the other night, when that's a joint economic development, they need to come see it. I'm sure we're going to start that back up before long.
He's right, now, they just...
They just have to bring it in a way that we can accept it. Now, you said you had a picking table going at one time, that's been quit for four years. We've not had that picking table for a long time, that was way before Whit, the commission took it over.
We were doing it.
Four years ago he was, but prior after the four years, he was using a nonprofit organization, and I can't think of the name of them, that used to come out there and pick the trash. Then we flipped over after Wab left, and we actually did it with the inmates. So, and then the COVID thing hit, and it's kind of stopped, but we're, that's been discussed, I've been in the meetings, it's been discussed, and I'm not part of that committee. The, the raises, the, the COVID monies that you're talking about.
The non-raises, or stuff.
Well, the supplements that you're talking about, it's easy, and I'm not trying to landblight you by no way, Mayor, we've discussed this, ARP fund, and we've set aside, we've looked at other counties in that committee that started this early on, and they're having to pay it back. No Morgan County was one of them, but I don't want to get the hopes of the people up that works for us, that may not come to par. You have the right to actually dedicate that, but it takes the commission to approve that. Do I think our employees did a great job? Yes, that's why we chose to try to give them a bigger raise this year than we have been advised. Now, Zach probably can speak more on that, on the, on the ARP funding, because I know we've exhausted the first, first phase of ARP. Now, the second phase is still up in the air, am I correct?
I'll speak on it during my...
Okay, I'm sorry, but I'm not trying to landblight you, Mayor, I know that it's easy to say it, but it gets to the point that the commission has to sit down and figure all this out, but I know one thing that did come across last year when it was mentioned, that each department head has to go back and distinguish the hours it was worth. Now, if the courthouse was closed, they don't get to count that. So, you know, all this big wish list that's been brought to us tonight, and I'm not against helping our employees, we've got something coming to the table tonight to take a place to help them out again, but that'll be left up to us when it gets to our, our table, you know? Pardon?
I have ten seconds.
I'm done.
Okay. Mayor, anything else before we move on?
That's true statements, but the law was written, so county mayor's hand-dedged it, and recommended, and it has to be voted on, but I'm not going to abandon our employees as a one-time supplement, it is not a review, it's not a maintenance of that position, so. But we do have a couple of programs that you'll hear tonight that are going to ask for small ARP support.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, reversal order now?
Good God, man.
Scott, you have anything?
Don't have anything, John, thank you.
Rusty, you have several things?
Yes, and it's going to take me a few minutes, just bear with me, I hope I've got more than three minutes, because it's, and I'll make it fast. The first thing we have is the Highland Telephone Company and Communication District had came and met at our Communication Committee meeting, and it gave a great presentation, and we sat down with them as a committee and went over a lot of holes that we have in our system. They're going to apply for a large grant of...
They're gonna apply for a large grant, a very large grant, and they've not asking for any A R P funds, uh, but they need a letter of support. Uh, we thought that we, the way it was arranged, they was gonna apply for a federal part, and they discussed it with me last week, they're actually gonna go with the state part now. So, it gives us a little bit more breathing room. They had the February the 22nd, which if you just look at the calendar, that's our next meeting, and we was gonna try to do a support letter individually, but now we don't have to do it that way. We've got sample letters, we'll have that ready for us next Monday night, but it's ready now, it's in your packet. The other thing that go along with the Highland Telephone Company is, uh, we also need to contact school superintendent, we need that letter from the schools. We need the Veterans Affairs, and the commission needs to request this tonight and have them go ahead and adopt it. They can do this on their own. Now, if they choose not to, that's their business. The letter, when they turn all this grant in, all these letters will look good. 911, we need a letter from them. We need a letter from the Campbell County Rural Fire Service, and also a letter from the Rescue Squadron, um, for that support. It's not that we're taking, I've talked to Mr. Kocher, our attorney, it's not taking nothing away from the other entities that's applying. If they want to apply for a grant for Campbell County, I'm sure the County Commission will actually do them a letter of support also. But we have a great opportunity, and I spoke to some people in Nashville, and I think that some of the rural counties in East Tennessee is gonna get quite a bit of it. The next thing, and I apologize, is the approval of the COVID leave policy, the end date to be extended to June 30th of 2022. Uh, the commission actually set that date for January, or actually December the 31st. Uh, the committee met the other night, we went through a whole lot of issues, we talked about changing things, moving things down the timeframe. Uh, the school board went ahead and adopted theirs for the exact thing that we came across beforehand. They had actually stopped Thursday, January too, also. But from the support of the committee, we're gonna bring it to the commission Monday night to extend that leave to the last, to the fiscal budget year. And, uh, now what we do after that, I don't know. I hope and pray that COVID leaves. Uh, but that's one thing that we've kept in place for our employees that's been stopped across a lot of different agencies and a lot of different counties. We also, the Insurance and Personnel Committee that I chair, uh, we've had some, some things that's been brought up also with our directors. We had, we have a maintenance director here in the courthouse, we have a sanitation director and the Veterans Affairs Director that we're in charge of. And they don't have to fill timesheets out, I don't know if you ones are aware of how the directors work, but they have to fill out leaves. So, we actually come across the loophole from an employee that had brought to our attention, and, uh, we're gonna treat the employees one, one way, we're gonna treat the supervisors the same. So, my recommendation to the commission from the committee is to, that Johnny Bruce, our chairman, whoever the chairman is at the time, will actually be signing for their leaves when they want to take days off. And, uh, and Amanda's also in that pot, her's already been taken care of for years, but, uh, and we spoke with Amanda that night. But if they actually put down leave, sick leave or whatever, Johnny's gotta approve that before it goes to finance for payment. So, it's not a new policy we're writing, the only insert we're putting in is the chairman of the County Commission will be the one that says, "Yes, you can take off," or "No, you can't," and he's the one that signs leave policies. The interlocal agreement between L U B and Campbell County Government, that has been finalized through attorneys, am I correct, Joe?
There's been several revisions that have gone back and forth. I think the one that you have is the latest revision, uh, that I understand is acceptable to L U B and, uh, of course, as far as the legal form is concerned, it appears to be proper to be, except you can decide whether you want it or not. It's not an exception.
And I appreciate, Joe, that you ones, you ones had a lot of work to do on that, but if you ones all recall, the Campbell County Commission has had some water lines in place for the seven or eight-year cycles, and we weren't able to do them, and this A R P funding, we are now. But in turn, L U B has partnered with the Campbell County Government, that's why this agreement's come to place, to pay another $3 million. So, they're gonna put skin in the game with us. And if we do it like we did last time, in the little small project that we had, we approve it, it becomes their baby. We don't worry about change orders, we don't add, add-ons, it's theirs, it's gotta be done. But this agreement, if you ones will take time out and read it, if you gain questions, you can call me or Jeff or Joe or Kathy, that are attorney Kathy Parrott for L U B, or you can call Kenny Baird. But this is substantial, one of the biggest water line projects going on right now in East Tennessee, and the commission and L U B is the one that presented it and got it started. And I'm gonna appreciate Mr. Whit Goins, biggest part of it, he's worked on and had this set up for, for, I know for 12 years, some of these, I've heard it every month, and, uh, and I can always bank on Whit. Every month you put on the li, on the, on the agenda, water lines for his district. Lot of us is fortunate to have water lines, and my district's blessed, very blessed. But we have holes, and they've got some big holes in the first, and in the second phase, hopefully, if we don't spend all the A R P funding, Mike, there'll be a lot going on in the fifth district, hopefully. I hope I haven't missed anything. Okay. All that'll be brought up, and I know it's kinda lengthy, but it'll hopefully be quick, and if anybody's getting questions, don't hesitate to call the appropriate people.
I'm gonna give them an opportunity right now. Anyone here need to ask Mr. Orrick some questions? Mr. Marlowe, anyone else? Mr. Kitsch, anyone else? Okay, we only have two people, Rusty. Zach, you have the floor.
Okay, two things real quick. The interlocal agreement, wasn't there something about a $25,000 with the change order, and then, and then also, when's the meeting with L U B, when's their board meeting?
Their board meeting, I think, is next Monday night, if I'm not mistaken. It's either next Monday night or it's the following week. Yours is kinda different, I'm sorry, I apologize on that. Now, the $25,000 change order, that we won't be dealing with any change orders, that all falls on L U B. Once we sign the agreement and it gets approved, we're out of the water line business, all we're waiting on is those customers, the citizens, to get their water. So, if the increase in the pipe goes up, they don't come back to the table asking for more money. And that was done a few years back in the Waterline Committee. We set those standards that we stay out of, we, we're not gonna furnish some water, Johnny, or commissioners, uh, that's left to that utilities. So, we stay out of the business, and that's the best way. We don't have no change orders, we don't have, shouldn't have no headaches.
Mr. Kitsch, you have the floor.
Okay. Mr. Orrick, uh, my understanding, um, when we were at our, uh, committee, uh, the, the COVID relief policy, uh, we didn't change anything for the need of sake. We left it, uh, instead of being 40, we left it at 80 hours, is that correct?
We left it exactly just back to the...
And we're not gonna take a look at this again, the committee, until probably about the end of June, is that right? We extended till June the 30th.
I hope the COVID thing leaves, and we don't never have to look at it again.
Right.
Uh, if we do, we will.
Okay. Um, also, also, Mr. Chairman, I do want to commend our committee for taking a look at this water issue. It's been a long drawn-out situation with people needing water. But what I want to say to Commissioner Orrick, I commend you for having that meeting and having those, uh, people to explain to us, and Highland Communication guys, keep in mind, they have really worked diligently to get, uh, to work on broadband, they, we stayed here pretty much a lengthy time, and we also had, had, uh, maps where the pockets of, uh, the broadband could possibly be, and I think the first and second, and of course the fifth, is very fortunate that we was able to add those to, to those on the map as well. No, but thank you.
In closing, John, I'm sorry, in closing, uh, this commission, honestly, I've sat on this, makes my fourth commission, has worked their butts off to get water and take care of their employees, keep the bills paid, and we've been successful over the last four years that we've not had to increase taxes, thank God. Uh, because I think it'd be hard, be hard something to do. With everything that's took place, honestly, you, whether people pat you on the back or not, I'll pat you on the back, because that's the biggest undertaking I ever seen, I've never seen, and I went back a while back and looked at some of the old records, I don't think any utilities has ever teamed up with Campbell County Commission and funded that kinda money. Now, they've been some small pockets, but nothing like that. And hopefully, that we can get down that trail in time and get this other portion, which a lot of this other portion, I hope you ones keep in mind, is also for improvements. So, and I think we'll have to deal with that with a whole different, different, I guess, a different situations, the way we're gonna deal with that, but I appreciate what you ones all have done, because this, this committee, the Waterline Committee would not took place without you ones getting behind it. And Mr. Goins, I appreciate you so much on this water projects.
Mr. Chairman, I forgot to add something about the water on...
All right, bro. Did you answer your question?
Well, you had me on time, and I didn't get to say, I was gonna comment.
Mr. Orrick, you finished?
I am, thank you.
I'll give Mr. Goins a compliment if you would let me do it.
When it comes to your turn, you can give it to him.
Oh, that'd be great, sir.
Uh, Mr. Sue? Zach?
Okay, I've got multiple things, and this might take a while.
Okay, got it.
Okay. Uh, before I get on to the agenda, there's a couple things I need to bring up. I was looking at the calendar, and if I'm not mistaken, I believe next month, doesn't the Solid Waste Board need to meet?
The Solid Waste Board?
Yeah, the one, uh, if you don't mind, I'll refer, Mr. Davis, I'll refer that to the Solid Waste City meeting next month, or I, I think there's some paperwork that came through, the bill, the bill had.
Oh, I'll be having a meeting, yes.
Okay, I mean, it has to be done on an annual basis, on all 15 of us sit on?
Yeah, we approve that every year.
Okay, and then also, just coming up in April, we have the Board of Equalization appointments. Um, let's see, that gets that taken care of. Um, water line, or wait, let me go back up. Entrance to meetings, I don't think this door was open, and I'm not trying to throw a fit over it, but that poses a major liability to this county because that is our ADA compliant entrance, and it needs to be open for all meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Marlowe.
Um, also, um, next Tuesday, it's not gonna require any votes, I believe it would be in compliance with the rules if we did it. At 5:00 PM, I'd like to have a Legislative Affairs meeting just to go over legislation before we go to Nashville the next weekend, I believe, looking at the calendar, Tuesday evening's about the only night that will work, and so we'll do that at 5:00 PM. Okay. So, okay, let's see here. Um, also, on the water lines, also wanna commend Commissioner Goins for all of his hard years of work on that project, and I'm glad to finally see that project getting done. Okay, let's see. I'll do, I'll talk about the ARPA last. For my agenda items, I have the IRS mileage rate, and the comment I had on it is, um, this is just increasing it to the IRS rate. We need to be very careful, and we need to probably check it again in about December when the IRS releases those rates, because otherwise we might not be compliant with the law, and that could cause a major audit finding if we don't comply with the IRS provisions. Um, and then we have the T D O E education agreement for the school board, um, that is something we're required to approve because it extends beyond the end of the fiscal year. And then, um, the Infrastructure Committee met on, uh, we met last Monday, and we approved a motion to use the standard allowance revenue loss option for all of our allocation, and this gives us some additional flexibility. This also ensures compliance, and so that's why we can go ahead and use the money for water lines, we feel confident with that, and that's why I believe we had the budget amendment tonight to go ahead and allocate the money for the paving. And, um, as to the ARPA rules, um, I do wanna remind you all, we did pass rules back months ago as to how we are going to handle ARPA funds. I will have Amanda send those out tomorrow, but specifically, I believe the guidelines state that anything dealing with hazard pay has to go through insurance and personnel, and because the Infrastructure Committee has been allocate, or has been tasked with handling A R P funds, it then goes to the Infrastructure Committee, Budget and Finance, and then ultimately the commission. And out of the first allocation, there's only $14,000 remaining because we spent $3 million on the water line project, 500,000 on ambulances, and I've missed, I believe, and 320,000 on the sheriff's annex, and the other half, I believe, will be coming late summer, or late spring, early summer. And I believe that's got it, and I know that was a lot very quick.
Anyone have questions for Mr. Marlowe? Mr. Davis, anyone else? Mr. Davis, you have the floor.
Mr. Marlowe, what, what door was it that was locked down?
This one over here, it looked like it was.
This going in?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I know I've seen a couple try to get in, that come back around, but, okay, I just didn't know which door was coming in.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm sorry, sir.
Finish, Mr. Marlowe?
I believe I am, so I've got the three items on the agenda.
Yes, thank you. Lisa?
I just wanted to update people about the construction of the valley. We had talked with, or I talked with Matt Edens a month or so ago, and he said that the asphalt plant has been closed down until March, and he was tied up, this night, for questions, so he couldn't make tonight's workshop. So, I have requested that him and T Doc show up next month because, uh, March will have asphalt up and running, and we just need to see, especially for the people living up the valley, when we're gonna get it paved. It's time, it's past time, and, uh, we've got several issues, so, um, hopefully, I'm gonna be calling him tomorrow, I think we're gonna talk about some stuff, but, um, maybe we can get a better understanding next month on where we are at versus paving. So, anyway, I just wanted to update the citizens on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before, go on. Does anyone have any questions for Lisa?
I don't.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Make it easy.
Okay. Anyone else?
No.
Duane? Duane, did Duane have?
Real quick, um, is Rogers Group doing the paving now?
I'm assuming they are, if that's what, did that, no, no. Who was it?
It's going through the project paving?
Well, he just told us, but did he sing last month?
It's under Potter's side, he...
I know, but he was waiting the asphalt part, Rogers.
They got their own asphalt plant.
My, my understanding that Rogers Group was gonna be renting a building up the valley for some time, that's what made me think that maybe they were...
I'll ask Matt Edens tomorrow.
Check on it.
I will.
So, do you have a question?
Yes, Lisa, uh, my understanding, the, uh, the construction has stopped completely, or just with the asphalt, or what? Can you give us a little bit, do you know anything else, or?
No, I really don't. I mean, I, you see them out there, I don't, I'm not into the construction business, but I mean, I just drive up and down that valley 10 times a day, calling kids back and forth, you know, you see them on the side of the road, I mean...
Maybe next month, we'll...
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna see where we're at. Now, I do know that they were working on putting culvers and stuff in the food line, I mean, everybody could see that.
Mr. Orrick, is he? I'll, I'll...
Yeah, go ahead.
...him because he said he can help us with this issue.
They're working on the, the east side of the road now?
With those culvers and stuff.
But there was a question that arose that actually, um, I think it was, Duane Kitsch had called me, that he'd had some phone calls, and from citizens up in the Davis Chapel area because they had posted signs and covered them because a detour, and everybody was up in the air, and I think I seen Mr. Baxter, Paul Baxter, was at the city meeting, asking the question, they came back with the answer, which I'd done called and found out, that they're not closing 63, they're gonna detour some of the small roads. When you branch off to Davis Chapel, they're gonna be shut, hit down, till they pave that section into Davis Chapel. that section into Davis Chapel. And that's where the confusion got started about the detours. I guess you heard the same thing.
I didn't hear, no.
Yeah, they put a bunch of signs up with plastic over top of them, it says "detour", and everybody thought they was going to shut down 63 and divert it around Back Valley into La Follicle, and that wasn't the case.
Oh, yes, because some of the citizens at that traffic cannot, that guy broke in and all that.
Yeah, it's just, when they start paving in March, they're going to pave those sections, like the Davis Chapel, next to Billy Bowser, everywhere there's a turnoff, that section's going to be paved and fixed.
Now, my biggest complaint, their paper calls that food line, that food line.
And they're getting ready to install the traffic lights at Food Line.
Okay, let's move on here.
Well, we'll try to update them, and they will, they should be here next month.
Okay, Mr. Kitsch?
You have the floor.
Okay, great, thank you. First, are you going to give me 30 minutes?
You better.
Oh, he's first on the list. Again, I think we all are, commend Commissioner Whit Goins for his dedication of 40 years plus. Again, his heart has solely been with the first district and in with the water, and the people in the first district, I know, are very proud of him. I'm glad to be on the Water Committee with Chairman Ork and the rest of us, and we're finally able to move forward with the, with the city of La Follicle, Kenny Bear Utility, with the utility, La Follicle Utility, and I think we've got all, got a great team of this thing moving forward, and I think in the really near future, we're going to be able to actually finally get water for people that solely deserve it. Again, I think we ought to at least clap and give Mr. Goins a hand. Mr. Chairman, to mention what Mr. Ork was talking about and Commissioner Lester on the road, you got me on timer?
Yep.
Okay, good, I can do, I'll do this quickly. To commend what Ms. Lester Rusty was talking about, is actually, Mr. Baxter is in the city of La Follicle, in the county. What happens here is, when they put this plastic over, that's, that's a situation where they're going to be able to open the roads up when it probably gets all final. That's the details of what they were speaking about. Okay, the only thing that was on my portion, I'm carrying the sponsoring, Mr. County Mayor's portion, yes, yes, that's right, sir. Otherwise, everything's good, thank you.
Anybody have any kids? Anybody have any questions for Mr. Kitsch?
What is?
What would you say? Rescue? Anyone else? Mr. Davis? Okay, rescue first, and round second.
Now, what about a fire truck, Scotty?
It's actually, I'll pull mine up here. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ork, it's actually, let me see here. I'm going to be making a motion for, for submission of a fund, public, for the rural fire metro, and that's, we'll be bringing that forward, and making a motion to reoccur for the grant.
Is that the CDBG grant?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Didn't they apply for it last year? They did, and they, they were denied. So it's, they was denied? Yeah, they missed, and I think Mitch Limb said by just a few points, right there. And they're going to apply for it again. Has anybody else stepped in for this fall, and we've already approved anybody else for anything else? Ambulances, fire trucks, or anything like that? The CDBG grants was the one time deal. And I'm not trying to knock them out of the park, but if somebody's done been requesting, we can't let two of them.
I know this is a block grant, Mr. Ork, that the mayor's speaking about for the rural fire department. Mr. Chairman, is it in order for him to, he didn't explain it to us about this, so can he explain it? Do you give him opportunity, or?
He's on his back.
Go ahead, so is he on my time, sir?
I mean, that's the recommendation of the Development District, and they are going to provide a match. Unless... But what I'm saying is, anybody else applying for this same grant? I don't know. Because sometimes, we're back to back, with Goins, we tell you, we try to do waterlines, and I know we're not doing waterlines with CDBG this year, but, well, we could have applied for this coming year, but we chose not to. And the thing was, with the CDBG grants, they didn't want to intermix that federal money with the state money. And it kind of stopped, it was still running around nice, but I just didn't want to hand it to them tonight, and we've got other plans already in place. So you're saying there's nothing else? No one else, I know. Okay. Is there anyone else who has a question? No, I think that's covered, as long as... Davis, you have the floor.
What's the match on the grant? How much is the truck going to cost?
It's a 30% match, and be approximately 100. I'll have somebody look at it, but I think the truck was remunerated 20,000, but they got the match from there. Mr. Marlowe's in the back, he's asked to speak anyway, so he'll be able to...
Have I still got time, Mr. Chairman?
I'm good.
Real quick.
I'm good, yeah, I'm good.
Okay, Mr. Kitsch, you have the floor.
Okay, I also wanted to commend Commissioner Marlowe, he's in the first district, we joined the second, the first, and he's been working very hard with, with Commissioner Ork and all of us, and I want to commend him as well, thank you.
Anything else?
That'd be it, thank you.
Thank you. Guys, Tyler King had on their proclamation of the White Oaks, Wildcats, and Joke on with your boys, and the small school basketball camp, and I think it was a proclamation for the Jacksboro Elementary Eagles and Lady Eagles, you know, for the large school basketball, and we might have to do ours next month.
Sir.
All right, moving on then. Rob, Jeff's floor.
I don't have anything for a motion, but last month, this body actually, I brought a resolution to this body to extend natural gas to the community of Passion Analysts. I've got a question for the mayor, are there any reason why you didn't sign the resolution?
It's already done. I provided the information. They already had the plan.
You didn't say?
I don't think you signed it, did you?
Well, the plan that you're requesting is already in place. I sent that information out.
But what I'm asking is, I heard you, you refused to sign it, so Mr. The chairman actually had to sign it, and sends in power plant utility.
That I did. And they've already completed the work, so they didn't need your request from me.
I know, I got a question for you.
This is actually the extension from Valley View School running up to the county line for the first and second district citizens that was requested. This work hasn't been done, this is a new project that's being asked to complete.
Okay, did you get a chance to review the schematics I sent out with the design?
Yes.
That, they have served the vow, and they've exceeded the vow.
This project hasn't been started.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Why don't you still have the floor, man?
That's it, that was my question, why was it, why was the refuse to sign of the actual request?
My understanding, that's what you requested, that project, and they had the schematics for it. I just don't want to ask them for something they've already done. It's already played.
I think we had a couple, Mr. Ork, you have a question, just a second. Kitsch, you're next.
And I, and I don't see anything wrong with, with sending a letter to them, but I'd like them to actually come, if they could, to one of our committees, and explain to us what their intentions is. Mr. Chairman, if you can draft something, if that's the favor, the pleasure of the commission, because we need to know what, what sections are being done, because we're going to be overwrapping a lot of waterlines in this future plan, and I've seen, and I'm not saying nothing bad, but sometimes, you can only put certain things, you have a bluff side, and you have a ditch side, and guess where the water and the gas and everything's going to go? So I'd like to actually, if we could, possibly the next month, that we could get the engineers to come from P-Cud, Powell Clinic Utility, and set down, what would be appropriate committee to bring that into? Industrial Committee?
Yeah, that, building and ground.
Yeah, this, if we get into a committee, we could actually sit down, we could find out what their plans is.
Mr. Chigman, this is your time. Are you good with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Command that you get there. Rest, anything else?
Yeah, and I think the, the only place that I'm aware of that they've run the natural gas is out in the peninsula, and they're working on it right now, and I'm sure they've got future development going to go up the valley, but I'd like to know, and if you are aware, we're putting water out in that same area, at Alder Springs, and coming across the valley, up to Fly Hollow, so it's good to know, and that's it.
Okay, Mr. Kitsch?
You giving me 30 minutes?
You have 30 minutes?
Oh, thank God, don't make talk, I was trying to finish my stuff up here. Okay, Mayor, first of all, can I ask, okay, go ahead.
Need to be addressing your question.
Okay.
Robert has the question.
Okay, do I have a chance to talk to this guy here, Mayor?
No, you just need to, Robert.
Okay, maybe. Did you say second district, right?
First and second district.
Okay. My understanding that the mayor has said that this is in place, and he supports it 100%, and you're wondering why he didn't support the resolution or sign the resolution when it's already moving forward?
This resolution was brought to this committee, to this body, and it passed. It is the mayor's duty to sign that resolution. If he doesn't sign or refuse, then the chairman takes that authority.
And Mr. Chairman, my understanding, if the mayor's name is mentioned, he's allowed to speak, is that right? Is that my understanding from you?
Mr. Kitsch, you made the comment.
Yeah, I know, but I'm asking you...
Right, it's Dr. Rock.
Okay, so, he's, he's told you that he, he supports the resolution, and it's moving forward, is that not good enough for you?
No, the project is not started at the valley. This is for extension, if you pay attention, Scotty. This is Valley View Elementary...
If you explain yourself better, then we would.
Tell them.
Valley View Elementary to the county line, which is old 63, then it stops at the New Horizon Church in front of Big O's, going up to the county line. It stops at that certain location. So nothing's been done there. This is a new resolution for that project.
That'd be fine, sir.
Mr. Davis, you have the floor.
Robert, the information that the mayor said he sent an email out, is this the same information last month? It's 5 minutes till 6, we're here, on our, ready to vote, we all get an email from the mayor about this project, that he had received on the 12th, and he gave it to us on the 18th, 5 minutes before the meeting. So is this the same information that he says we received to know about, when we need to discuss it in a meeting?
That's correct, we didn't receive it 5 minutes...
5 minutes before the meeting, Mayor, and your email said you got it on the 12th.
Right.
Yes, sir. The mayor got the email on the 12th about this project. He held it in his lap until 5 minutes before 6. We come in here, I get home, email, it says 5:55 today, and it's all about this project, and we get it, and that's how I know about it. 5 minutes, you know, when I got home after the meeting, he sent it 5 minutes before the meeting, and he'd had it 5 days before. That's why this one, as you, has the same message.
I'm assuming...
It's under the water, the gas line?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I want now.
Okay.
I'm done.
Mr. Chigman, you can...
Yeah, I'm finished.
You finished?
Yeah.
Very good. Mr. Goins?
I have to come back to water, I am. Yes, I've been, I always thought of water, and I always will be, in this, and I appreciate all you commissioners for stepping with me.
You've done an outstanding job, sir.
Great job.
I ain't got too much time left, but I'm still peeping and droning.
You've done, you've done an outstanding job.
Thank you, Shad.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Goins?
I'd like to make a comment, Mr. Chairman, and I've done made one, but, but Whit, I know your intentions is not to seek office again, how many years have you served as a county commissioner?
I think I've got 47.
So, in my eyes, when you bring that much experience to the table, it really helps, and Whit's actually got me to the side before and said, now, boy, you need to straighten up a little bit, and I appreciate that, but he did an outstanding job as a commissioner in, but, and not only that, he's a, he's kind of like a liaison for La Follicle Utilities, because I think he has breakfast every morning with our general manager. So, not just us sending letters in, he's sitting there every morning to tell him, hey, we need these waterlines, we need these waterlines. And, and it's not in, none in my district, my district's blessed, but it's, the second and the, and the first district's going to be really blessed with this amount of water lines. I think it was 10 and a half miles of waterline. I just hope, let's just be praying that somebody starts manufacturing a lot of waterlines, so we'll have plenty, but I appreciate you, Mr. Goins.
Mr. Goins, do you have, you have the last comment?
Appreciate him, too.
All right, very good, we're going. Mike?
I don't have anything.
Ralph, you have the floor?
All right, Mr. Chairman, I got two projects, two committees, so I'm only double time. First, first of all, is information only. Tony was going to put a keypad lock on the exit door out here, and fire code won't let us, because that door is a fire, has to be hit and open, if we put a deadbolt, it won't open, so hopefully by Monday, he's going to have all of us a key made. For the information to y'all, when we come to the courthouse, to see the secretary, to bring the stuff, we've got to go all the way around, go through checkpoints and all that, we can get a key and go straight into the back, and not be bothered with that, just go in and back out. So that's why we're getting a key to the back door, so, but that's the information. Any questions?
Well, just, you finished it?
I don't think I got too much.
No, no, you're...
You confused me on all this stuff.
Hey, I'll have, I'll have, I'm sure we'll have...
All right. Now, okay, as y'all know out here in front, basically, we're, we're adding on a little room for Dennis Potter's tires, it's got bulletproof tires, so no one can go in his office, they do all the business out there. All right. We're going to put Formica countertops on, he's wanting granite. So, he called me, I said, no, we, if we do granite for you, we're going to have to it in the whole courthouse. So he's agreed to pay the difference between Formica and granite out of his own pocket. So, we've only got one quote of $1,060, but I asked for two, and Tony didn't, wasn't able to get the one today, but I'll have the other one by Monday, and then I'll have the other one, that what the difference is going to be, the granite's going to be somewhere around $2,500, $2,600. So if you all, we got to vote on this. He wants to pay the difference, and we'll make a motion to pay the, I'm going to say the $1,060, and Mr. Potter will pay the opposite, the rest of it. I like to, anybody got any comments? If you don't agree with it, don't want to do it, well, I need to know tonight.
Go ahead, will you finish it? Anybody that has any comments, we can come back and ask you.
Well, that's it, that's my, I don't have questions.
All right, Mr. Ork, I think you have...
If anybody else, Scott.
Just a second.
That's just on, that's on buildings and grounds, I don't want to mix them up, that's on buildings and grounds.
So you want to do...
Yes, sir, I don't want to...
Okay, Mr. Ork, you have, anybody else?
Yeah, if anybody else wants to go, it's fine.
Okay. Be rusty, then Zach.
How much is, how big is the granite or the countertop?
The, it's a six foot, I'm sorry, a three foot, flat.
Normal size?
Normal, well, for, it's a, yeah, and it's 13 foot, 4 inches, by 5 foot and 8 inches, L-shaped, out here in the west view.
So we got 18 foot.
Roughly, yeah. But you got to remember, too, when you cut that...
Is that 1,200 installation, or is that just buying it at Lowe's?
Well, the price, the quote that I got is from Lowe's, I didn't...
They're not going to install it?
No, that's what it is. I think Tony will install this, but the granite...
And that's the record for Mike, for countertop?
Pardon?
$1,250, is that what you said?
No, $1,060.
$1,060?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But now...
And it's going to be 2,500 to 2,600 for the granite?
Right.
And he's going to pay the difference?
He'll pay roughly $1,500 difference.
That sounds great to me, if he wants to pick up the difference, but, but you're going to wait on another quote on the countertops somewhere else?
Monday night, I'll have exact what we're going to pay, and then what he's going to pay. But we, the main important thing is, now personally, I, I want to get another quote, I like to, and we'll get a look, we'll get both of them, split the difference, or what, you know, be fair about it, and then that's all we will pay out of it, and he'll have to pay the rest.
How much is, I mean, it's not over $100 a foot for Formica, is it?
Well, roughly guess, but right now, you know, the Formica's going to be $1,060, and the granite's gonna be about $2,600. So that's a rushed estimate for today, but I'll have it on paper next Monday, you know.
No, I think that was it. What was the other thing he had?
The keys.
Oh, the keys, that's, yeah. Oh, yeah, on the keys, Mr. Bruce.
Oh, just, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, on the keys. Does the county issue badges, employee badges?
We can get them through the sheriff.
Okay, so can you get us all, we're all county commissioners.
Right.
And that way, if we do have to go through the courthouse, that we're not stripped searched every time. And that badges helps you get in, 'cause we are employees of the county. Okay.
Yeah, is that the question everybody, you have?
Zach?
Okay, I've got a question on the countertop, and then I've got a question related to buildings and grounds, if that's okay.
Okay.
Okay, so just to clarify, I think you stated this, but I'll state it again.
I can hear you.
Okay, the difference is coming out of his own budget, it's not.
You didn't speak that.
Okay, the difference for the granite is coming out of his own budget, and it's not coming out of the county.
No, it's coming out of his pocket, not his budget. His pocket, he's paying it personally, not, not out of his budget. This was to be paid out of his own checking.
Okay, and another question related to buildings and grounds. Didn't the committee set a deadline for February 1st for new projects for next year?
I'm glad you brought that up. Yes, sir, you're right, we had a deadline of February the 1st. If anyone was wanting to do any improvement to their office or part of the building they, they serve in this county, if they didn't turn it in by February the 1st, nothing will be done to that building till next year. So no one, they had two months, no one turned in a form, so we, we don't have no major. Now, this is not emergencies. This is just, you know, somebody wants new windows, some of this, so everything's out until next year's budget, so.
That's Scotty.
All right, thank you, Zach, for reminding me that, appreciate it.
Mr. Davis, you still have the floor, sir.
The, all right, everybody understand about the countertops? All right, everybody understand about the key? Everybody want a badge? The badge is just to identify the, to the security that, you know, we are allowed to go on in. Okay, all right, I'll see if I can have that took care of the Friday. Now, that portion's over with. Now, Bill Sanitation. I'm a list here. We're at a meeting, done and out. We were having some issues with our tenants, having some arguments with disagreements, I'll say, with some of the ten, or people coming in to get rid of the garbage. And so we're at a meeting. We informed the sanitation director that if you pull in there and you got an Allen County tag, and you say you're not allowed to dump here, but they say, "Well, I own property in this county." Well, then they are to go to, if they don't have it, to Monty Boulevard and get a receipt that they own property in Campbell County, and they can, they can dump. If they've got a Tennessee Campbell County driver's license, they can show that also to them. Or if their tag says Campbell County, there's no problem. So that just needs to be understood that, you know, some, some of them, people pull in and they don't have the proof. We've advised them that you pull in and they got a couple of bags of garbage, and their tag is out of town. They don't have the, go ahead, let them throw it away. Two bags of garbage are gonna hurt us, let them throw it away, and explain they oughta come back. But we also informed them that once the customer and the tenant has a disagreement, the disagreement's over, the tenant is supposed to get a hold of Bill immediately and not keep on arguing with them, because that's not healthy, and it ain't safe, and it ain't good for a business to, you know. So that was one thing, but we will be voting on the tenant's just checking license, the tags, and proof of property. Anybody got a problem with that?
Anything else?
No, well, okay.
We'll come back to you.
Well, I know, but it's easier to actually get everything twisted up here, but all right. One note on the sanitation, on the compactors. I stopped at Valley today, and I asked him, "How's, how's things going here?" And he said, "You know," he said, "They put this in one month ago yesterday." He said, "You all were coming three times a week to get our garbage." They go once a month now. Now, just to give you a little information on savings, that, I lost my train of thought. 156 trips a year is down to 15. So that's where our savings is coming at in the county with these compactors. We're not running like ants on a hill trying to get, we're cutting down on all these trips. And if y'all don't know, these compactors at Valley, the garbage we pick up three times a week was brought back to Jack's Barrel, uh, done, reloaded, then tucked to landfill. Now, with all these compactors you see out here, they, when it's loaded, they pick them up and go straight to the landfill. It saves us all that, that's where the savings is coming in. And then, and then for another note on that, I need eight minutes. I'll get to it in a minute. Well, that's it on that. All right, now, you all, Joe, has everybody got a copy of this contract?
Should have.
Okay. Me and Joe's been working with a company over out of Los Angeles, California, and they are working at the old Taylor Machine Building, and they're needing to lease, they're on property 135, county owns property 134. They're wanting to lease it from the county to, y'all can read, I think I'll read just a little bit of it. They want to lease it a year at a time. Don't know, you know, they don't know how long to be there, they're hoping to be there for a long time. But me and Joe discussed, and they wanted us to give them a fair market price. Joe advised me that to do that, we don't have to have real estate come in, survey the property, go over all the property, and see what it would be. So me and Joe talked it over, and I called them and said, "Listen, you tell us what you wanna pay rent for. Make it easier." They want to pay us $1,500 a month, total of $18,000 a year, to rent a piece of property that's been sitting there for 35 years. All it's been doing is growing grass.
Wow.
So. Now, saying that, get back to the compactors. I talked to finance today, and I asked him, I said, "All right, we're gonna get $18,000. It's not in the budget, you know, we'll pay it upfront." Now, in this contract, they'll pay us upfront, so we'll have the $18,000. If they leave, we keep the $18,000. But if we tell them they gotta leave and break the lease, we pay them back the $1,500 a month for what's remaining. But once they sign and send us the check, we'll have $18,000 left. Well, some of us commissioners been talking, putting onings over these compactors. So when you pull in there and it's raining, you don't have to get out in the rain. So you can pull up, get out, and it even cover up the, the compactor, the hole it throws in there. So we can earmark this money to buy canopies to put over these compactors next month. So that's, that's what I don't wanna do. And I wanna start with District 1, in case we run out of money, and go through to District 5. I'm in District 5, but here's the problem. All the other county, the district has got one compactor in it. Mine's got five. So it's only fair to make sure all the others get one, and if we run out of money, then somebody in my district could just have to get mad at it. But that's my, that's my proposal on the $18,000. I'll be, want me to vote on that?
Anything else?
I hope I ain't forgotten, but I think that's it.
Okay. Just a second.
Joe?
Mr. Coker, just a second, hold just a second. Mr. Coker, the mayor, then Scotty, then Rusty.
Joe, that's good. What's in your package here? It was just a one-page letter of intent that this gentleman has sent. It's not a lease, it's not a contract, it's just a letter of intent, and there would need to be an actual lease agreement.
I know, yeah.
We'll use the review and approve. And I'm not having a direct discussion with this gentleman. I would assume that his attorney would be, you know, or that he would send a more detailed proposal, but just so you'll understand, what you're seeing there is just the letter of intent. The devil's at the detail, as they say, you know, we would have to figure out the details.
Thank you, sir. Mayor?
Mr. Davis, you get any jobs? Who's in with it?
Twenty.
One in the county?
They're here. They're working, been there for three months.
For our property, or they were?
No, no, our property's storage. Their, Taylor Machines, they're just renting our piece of property for storage.
Are they current with gelatine on the building rent?
On the what?
Are they current with building rent with gelatine?
I don't know, I didn't, I didn't ask them on the business about gelatine.
I think they're, couple periods.
Well, they just, they just started, so they never paid them the first thing.
My question is, Mayor?
The, well.
Anything else, Mayor?
Okay. Yeah, well, the, the contract is, I know straw boats is like a tornado, but if you all think you want to lease this property to them, then I can contact them tomorrow and tell them, get with our attorney, and let's get us a contract wrote up by next Monday, 'cause they need it immediately. And, you know, that's, but that's the reason, as Joe said, you know, they're not going to spend a lot of time doing it till they see they can get the, get the property.
Will you ask for straw boat?
Yes, if, yes.
Okay, Scotty, you have the floor?
Mr. Davis, my understanding, I think I got the answer, I wanna be, make sure that, we're confirming this. Before we make, take any action, it sounds like about $15,000, then $3,000 more for the extra two months. That's $18,000 total for the year?
$18,000, I was ready.
Okay, so my question to you is, we're just gonna make sure, you're, you're so amped to, to get somebody there to rent the property, and I, I respect that. My understanding, it, it's not for a, an 18-wheeler trailer, it's for a tractor, is that correct?
No.
Okay, what, what exactly are they gonna use the property for?
They, they are, it's a coin factory.
Bitcoins?
Bitcoins. There's a trailer they've got, like, right now, they got like 75 sitting there. They're seven foot wide, 45 foot long. They store them outside, they take them into the machine building, and then they put all the equipment into them, and then they're shipping out all the United States. This is just a hub to put them together, and they need to, the property to carry those 45-foot. They don't have no wheels on them. They carry them out with a forklift and set them down when they need it and go out and get them.
So that's your question, Mr. Kip?
Well, okay, so that being said, you're saying that we're, we're gonna go through the proper channels with our attorney and make sure that when all this is said and done, that we're gonna have, we're gonna come, make sure that everybody's on the same level that you and Mr. Coker, so we'll know that, you know, we're going by proper procedures, correct? All right, thank you.
Question?
Yeah. In my business, 46 years with the public, the main source of any business, whether you're small, whether you're big, is your customer. And this situation is, it is considered the taxpayer out of the sanitation. When I go take my garbage as a tax, okay, I'm looking right at him, yeah.
We're talking about the trailers.
Well, and it's, that's, well, it's, I got another question, I was done with that one. That being said, the most important person that goes out to the sanitation is the taxpayer. So if a tenant is waiting on that customer at the compactor, he should be all smiles and happy-go-lucky to even have the job. For the customer is our main important person. Without that customer, we don't have anything. They're the taxpayer. So that being said, I, I would hope, and I think, I know Mr. Bill about, you know, as good as about anybody else, so he should direct any problems or anything like that when it comes to any situation where somebody don't have a problem with a customer or anything like that. Do you agree?
Right. That's your point.
That is my point. Simple point to the point.
Right.
Thank you.
But?
I was glad to know that.
Mr.? Hold just a second, then.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Ork, you have the floor, and then Zach, you have the floor.
On agreement, they're gonna pay us upfront.
Upfront.
And, and how's it gonna read for next year?
It's, Joe, I read it, I didn't.
Well, I mean, that's fine, I mean, is it gonna be based on the?
It goes for a year's lease at a time, renewal every year. You know, it, it.
So it's actually gonna start? It's gonna start immediately, which they'll pay the, they'll be taking out $1,500 from January, right?
They'll send us $15, $18,000 for 12 months. End of these 12 months, they'll send us another $18,000 if they still wanna lease the property.
Agreement worked out, Joe will have it finalized.
And also, in the agreement, they wanted the permission, you know, they would have to come back to us, but they want the right to build a building on it if they desire. If they build a building, it will automatically fall back to the county. And they put a fence up, they're gonna put a fence up.
Is this the same company that, that handed Gelaco Utilities, like a $300,000 check?
Same thing.
That built an infrastructure for the Bitcoin? Because Bitcoin's done through computers.
Yes.
So, and they're, and they're the same ones?
Same, same thing.
Thank you, that's it.
Mr. Morrow, I hope that you're going to ask me to extend 30 minutes, correct?
That's exactly what I'm gonna do, but can I add something to that? Can I add, can I add, can I add that if we extend it, that the amount of time that commissioners spend adding, asking questions, they want it to be two minutes instead of three?
We can do that for next, the next workshop, I'm doing, I'm doing, because you'd be shortchanging secrets of that, okay?
Add 30 minutes.
Your, your motion?
To extend 30 minutes.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
I have a second by Mr. Kip.
I'm in favor.
Roll call, please.
Charles Baird.
Yeah.
Dwayne Baird.
Yes.
Johnny Bruce.
Yes.
Ralph Davis.
Yes.
Michael Douglas.
Yes.
Whit Goins.
Yes.
Robert Higginbotham.
Yes.
Scotty Kip.
Yes.
Flipper Fulmire.
Yes.
Lisa Lester.
Yes.
Zachary Marlowe.
Yes.
Sue Nance. Yes. Restuance. Scott Staley.
Uh, before we go on, Zach, I would entertain that next workshop to cut the debate to two minutes to three. Mr. Davis, I think you have one more, Amanda.
Yes. Sorry, sorry, I overlooked it. All right, I talked to the state of Tennessee today. They're gonna try to get me the information tomorrow that I need for next week. And if I don't have it, then I'll just have to do it for next month. But we put these new scales in out there, and they've, don't hold me to what it was, but it's somewhere around $100, $115,000 that the county paid for them new scales. We weigh, I was up there working on putting a roof on that little, um, office.
Scale house.
And a guy came through in a little F-1G truck loaded down with tree limbs. We weighed him, and he goes and throws them away, and he, you know. So what we're doing, on average, is about 40 to 60 trips a day across them scales for tree limbs, that we don't collect no money for whatsoever. So I talked to the state today, and they're gonna see if they can't give me permission not to weigh anything we're not getting paid for. We're wearing our scales out. And 20-year, you know, these scales for like 20-year, well, if we don't quit weighing these tree limbs every day, then we're gonna cut down five to 10 years off our scales. So they're, they're in agreement with me, but they're gonna get me written proof that we can stop weighing these tree limbs. One, one guy come through with a rose bush, a rose bush. We weighed it. 22 pounds.
Choose from now and the end of the year for resolution.
Yeah.
Is that conclusion?
No, yeah, I'm done. I kind of got the question.
We have a question, Mr. Davis, a real quick one. Is the old scale still in place?
No, sir, they removed them today.
Thank God.
And another note on that, since you asked me that. All right, we was looking to spend a few thousand dollars for metal to build some shoes with. We took our scales up, and we're gonna save ourselves probably $15,000 for using them old scales to build our shoes with.
Mayor, and then Scott.
Uh, Mr. Ork, talk from, he did it today. He just did ask, I got it five minutes before the meeting, Ralph. Did ask for an inventory of what we're putting in burn. Said that'll be a burn.
You wanna give me three minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, good. The question you had brought up about the truck, my question is, you know, your coin bed or whatever you're doing over there on this property? Let me ask you this, Mr. Davis. It sounds like to me they're from, sound from Frisco, California. Have you all, I'm just asking a question, have y'all done your homework on this company to see if, you know, how long they've been in business and all that?
No.
Yeah, but, okay.
I know the people that's running the, running the, the people, they are local that's running it. I know them, and they're the one that contacted me about leasing the property. And, but, but you're more in freedom. And, but, but you're more than free to check on them, you know, unless...
I, I can actually do that, I'm pretty good at that. This question to you, real quick, um, the, uh, okay, I'll wait till Russ to get some talk in there, okay. The question I have for you on the brush, is this for, um, commercial and residential, or just residential?
Let me restate and say, only for the brush that we don't collect money for. We only collect money for, for commercial. So, it's just the residential where, uh, all you good people just go around cleaning up your yard and go out there. I guess some of you've took something out there before and had to get it weighed. So, uh, but I'm just saying it's, you know, that's the point.
So, I guess that'll be monitored by the sanitation?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm done now. Unless Mike's got something to say.
Guys, it's my turn, moving, uh, do you want to get you all a folder out that I've been editing for? This month in recreation. I'll send this to recreation. You best can't. You heard, I've got a piece of property that's a hundred acres, that's between Jack's World and LaFaw. And we've been looking, you know, at purchasing property for recreation. Been saying that, um, Dwayne, since you're the chairman of recreation, would you mind taking this endeavor up?
I can.
Okay, um, that way, anyone has any questions they can ask in the recreation committee and so forth. But, you know, like I said, they've been looking for things where kids build ball fields, uh, maybe do a community center, stuff. And saying that, this might be an opportunity to do this, so, I think it's good and best for things. But again, uh, those kids, I don't want to take any questions, I'm sending it straight to Dwayne, for him to handle it, and, uh, refresh. Dwayne, you want to say that?
Uh, yeah. So, we're meeting next Tuesday, um, going out of town next Thursday. I'll give it to Amanda afterwards, and we'll, we'll set them up. Yeah, we may have to do it that Wednesday.
Wednesday, so you may have a problem with that.
Wednesday, just have open days.
Dwayne, you have four, sir.
Um, I don't really have anything to add to the agenda, but something that, uh, a little comment I want to make, and something we probably need to look into. Uh, I got a phone call today that I think it's just a misunderstanding altogether. Uh, but, any time that we have, any type of, any time somebody is building onto, or building a new structure as far as residential goes, you have to have a county permit along with a state permit if it's more than thirty square feet. Got, got a call from a state, uh, representative, and the person was told that they didn't have to get a state permit by, by an office, by a county office. So, you do have to get a county permit along with a state permit if you're building something for an addition that's bigger than thirty square feet. Uh, and, and something that we probably need to look into, uh, because I'm, I'm doing, I'm doing some work myself, and so I know this. Our county clerk's office does not sell the state permit if it's feasible, I think it's something we need to look into. It is.
Do you have a question?
And, and you may not...
Anyone else have a question for the last? Okay, let's see your own one.
You said they do not sell the state permit.
That's correct.
Can, and Joe making answers, can the commission pass that the clerk's office sells that permit, Joe? Or is that something they have to do in the House? I mean, it goes hand in hand, I mean, it's not their fault, you know, the state, but we also sell hunting and fishing licenses, we sell tags, and those come from the state, so, could we, could we ask, maybe, maybe somebody could make a motion next, if, if Dwayne wants to, that we request the clerk to start taking those? Because it's, makes it hard on people, they're going to come down here and buy a county permit to build an addition or build a house, and then they've got to run, I don't know, where do you have to go get a state permit at?
Uh, you got cash and carry, and then you go to it on the state, on the state website.
Dwayne, you was to carry that thing?
I can.
Resolution?
Yes, I can.
Okay, very good. Any other questions for George?
No, I'm just curious, I mean, we, and, and I know there's some things that we can't not force elected officials to do, but we could request. So, it might be something, you know, one-stop shop, you stop and pick your county permit up, you pick your state permit up, and you, and you're done.
Go, you anything? Yeah, I'll, I'll go along with Russ, I think we'll put this on, on them to start selling state permits. It'll be on the good state. Dwayne will be carrying that thing.
What you say, Dwayne.
Okay, that will wrap up everything for the commissioners. Amanda, you have all the resolutions and everything? No comment?
So, I passed out, last month, you guys approved those forms for the motions, I beg everybody to play a copy before you cannot create a write-down motion that you want to make, and then submit those back. I'll care to help you any way that I can, if we need help ordering them or getting them right, just let me know. But we need to start using those now because they're going to hurt.
Okay, thank you.
Can I respond back to her?
We, I'm getting ready, no, I'm getting...
Okay, well, I, okay.
Guys, I'm sorry, we, well, no, we're just a little bit longer than I wanted to, but hey, we'll give everybody an opportunity. We're not going to leave until we do. Ron, you will be last. Uh, Mr. Scott Collins, if you can, my pleasure.
They get three minutes, Joe?
They get three minutes?
Okay.
And then, they push to have... I'll send the committee to me. All right, Mr. Collins?
Mr. Chairman, I have, I have your permission to end that.
You serve the can, you don't want Scott to get those, that way Scott's going to...
I've been talking.
Good to have Scott back in the county again.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Scott Collins, I'm a candidate county manager, living several months in my life, for the last fifteen years. And I've been doing things for, uh, state. I did have fourteen years period of executive schedule, I don't know, for fifteen years as a city manager. And what I want to talk to you all, my, I'll, I'll, thank you, that I need to pitch hanging out right now. And it's helpful to the县, that we can move our stuff within our county. This can be an issue.
Yes, sir.
And the federal laws are already doing phenomenal job. With the plan, they really teach us in economic and social support. That, people are looking at that, prospects will be looking at us, meaning officials, so we can help. So, when I see the politics story, like the one that is in recent vacation, talking about this mission, talking about the possibility of the sports complex, that helps sell things, that helps sell Marshall and Rico's help. So, this proposal is on three key facts, number one, investor recruitment, with the two, Marshall and Rico recruitment, and number three, we're going to build the back of our county. Everybody has available land, so, everybody has an available work. So, what Campbell County has, that means other Anderson County may not have, so, most of them. Well, first and foremost, of course, we have North Lake, we have the mountains, and so many, I can be thrilled. But we also have a visionary commission that is wanting to build projects along those roads. The prospect of having this new sports complex is amazing. Yes, it will cost millions, but why are you investing, you're investing in a view, and also, so, when the chairman is going to offer this investment, that is a huge progressive move, that can move this commission. Mr. Chairman, if Rob Rees, uh, would just hang it out, I would be, hang any question?
Scott, did you mind, if I sent you to the Ways and Means Committee? I think, uh, this right here is something that we need to definitely get into, get into committee, if you'd be willing to do that.
All right, I'd be welcome.
Okay, uh, Robert, you chair the Ways and Means?
Yes.
Would you mind taking this?
I'll be glad to, I'll get with Amanda, and set up a date, and get back with you, Scott. And, um, hopefully, within the next week or so, we can, um, set one up.
And when I quit, Amanda has my help, so, if you need to do all of the ranking through this, have any questions plus a reference, please feel free to reach out to me and get your question.
Scott, thank you, and, and like I said, hey, uh, guys, I would recommend all of you go to the Ways and Means Committee and Robert says it and stuff, that way, hey, if you've got questions, I'm sure Miss Collins can answer, please.
Can I ask, Robert, maybe we could piggyback the recreation with the Ways and Means? Because it sort of goes hand in hand on our...
We, we can do that.
Okay, is, is that okay? I mean, this took place in the rec, you know, uh, committee, meeting on the sports complex, so, maybe we can piggyback those two, um, meetings, committee meetings together, if that's, that's okay?
If you and Robert will get together and, and set up a meeting and stuff, uh, Scott should be talking to ten people instead of just five.
Well, some of them overlap, so...
Yeah, that's good, that's true. All right, thank you very much. Shannon Delk? Shannon, sorry for the delay and stuff.
We're perfectly fine.
It's Valentine's Day.
It's Valentine's Day, my husband's birthday, so it's all good. I am Shannon Delk, I am with Tennessee Community Assistant, who are out of Moorestown, but we are currently helping several of your county neighbors write their home grant through THDA. Uh, doing some research, it's been quite a while since Campbell County has had a home grant here. I am new to this, but my executive director has been doing this for twenty years on, in the Johnson City area. But she has brought that into Moorestown, kind of to fill the gap that, that the county's already missing. So, I've done this since eighteen, uh, I have administered seven counties so far successfully, and closing out pretty quickly. So, um, with that, I know there's going to be lots of questions, and I, I would rather answer your questions than just sit and write all that stuff off, I think you gave them the packet. Uh, we, it's kind of a two-fold thing, we want to write that for you, there's no cost to the county, there's no obligation. I know, what's your ult?
I like that.
Um, we, uh, we write that kind of as just a, we want to help you bring that money here. Um, then, through that process, we help the, the mayor's office, you guys, however, uh, secure administrator, lead-based paint, and construction recap. We do that upfront because it helps your grant, I know you were talking about the CBD grant points and stuff. So, it is all point-based, based on our previous capacity scores. We've helped a lot of counties get grants that were not able to handle in previous years because of capacity scores were too low. Uh, THDA scores right now on a hundred-point system, uh, it takes them sixty minimum to get the grant, uh, and we have estimated that, that Campbell County will probably score right around a seventy-eight, which is great. Uh, that's one of the highest, the second highest county that we're working with right now in the score system. So, uh, we wouldn't really come too deep into the details at all. Um, so, um, I want you to all ask a question.
Okay, will you read this?
Yeah.
All right, just a second.
I have lots of information, but I'd rather give you time to ask questions.
What I'm going to do, instead of bombarding, Shannon, I'm going to give you a minute to ask your questions and give her an opportunity to answer, okay? Now, in saying that, who wants to ask her a question?
Well, I got, I guess I will present that.
You have one minute, sir.
What is your primary goal? Why don't you give us that outlook, what is, what is, what is the basically big point here that you want to respond to?
Yeah, sure, um, the home grant is basically to rehab or even replace, if called for, your substandard housing. So, what we have seen in other counties, especially the first year that you have it, uh, is able to go in and replace or rehab, uh, some of your older homes to maintain them, so that, if, I don't know about your county specifically, but, uh, we've been Union County, Clayburn County, things like that, and a lot of these homes that kind of rise to the top of all they have on point system, um, a lot of them aren't going to last very much longer. Uh, we have floors that are falling in, we have windows and roofs and, and stuff like that that are falling in.
Talk about more in the rural area, or all over the county?
And that is totally, you kind of have the ability to set the parameter for that. Uh, most of the counties have been county-wide, um, I've had one county that went county-specific because the city had a grant themselves. Um, so it is to bring up substandard housing into code. So, anything that we address has to bring them up to code, and if you go, we're talking about codes. If the county itself doesn't have code, we go with, uh, the state fire marshal, so everything is, is based into current building code.
Dwayne?
So, if the county, you know, decides to do this, is it ba, is there, is there a certain household, is there an income limit?
It is low-income based, uh, an average, if you had, uh, like a one person, so maybe a widow, some along that lines, the, uh, income limit is thirty-one-six, and an average family of four would be about forty-five points. So, uh, it is for low-income families, uh, there are several requirements, like you have to own your own property, you can't own multiple properties, uh, it can't be a house that you have lived in for a few short months and plan on flipping it. So, there's a lot of criteria, and as admin, if you go and cure us for admin, we take care of all that. We do your public meeting, we do the applications for the home applicants, we score them, we take care of the contractor, we, we, we go from point A to point Z.
So, fixed, yeah, so fixed income qualifies, I'm assuming, as long as they have, fit the income criteria?
A lot of, a lot of the folks that we see are elderly on social security, things of that nature.
Okay.
Russ, and then Robert. Are you with the state organization, or you're as a private entity?
We're, we're a nonprofit.
Do you know who wrote the grants for Campbell County in the prior years?
I don't, as far as the fact that I can go is seventeen.
I remember we've done this before.
I know Jellicoe had one in eighteen, but I'm not sure if he adhered to that.
And it says, if you said it's low con, low income limits, is anyone exempt, are any certain criteria there to exempt anybody?
Um, well, you have to be low income, um, if you own more than one property, then that's going to be a problem, um...
County commissioners are eligible?
Yeah, you, no. Um, so the county commission, it, the county would be getting it, so a lot of that, if your, if your county related, then you're not going to be able to file.
And these people that files, these people that actually can get it, that files for this money, that they come in their house and it's one-hundred percent paid for through this grant? If they, if they have to have upgrades for their bathroom, or their kitchen, or anything?
The grant is, um, so, a little different from the way it used to, uh, I know we...
It used to be a percentage.
It used to be that you could only invest forty thousand dollars per property. And that has changed because a lot of counties were giving the money back because they would have sixty, seventy thousand dollars worth of work on the property, or couldn't even deliver it. It now is, we, we have kind of a formula to give after-rehab value of a home, and when the inspector goes in, it has to be within seventy-five percent of that value. If it is over the seventy-five percent, the inspector can actually request that it be tore down and replaced. So, and that is a, a hundred percent free to them, there is a lien that goes on the property that the county would hold. If it's a rehab, it's a five-year forgivable lien, if it's a complete tear down, a re... If it's a complete tear down and rebuild, it is a 15-year lien. And that is forgivable, it goes away. So like your five-year would go away 20% each year, and then your 15 is like 60, 70% each year. And the only way that would have, ever have to be paid back is if they sell them all in that amount of time. And out of proceeds, not out of pocket.
And the name of your company is what?
Tennessee's Community Assistance Corporation, TCAC, because I have an account.
And you draw a pay through the grant process?
It is paid through the grant process.
What kind of percentage do you have to bring out of that grant process?
There's 6% advocacy in that. So in the past, it has been limited to $500,000. This year, they're actually opening it to $750,000. So 6% would be $40,000 in that. And it's a three-year grant that...
And you just oversee the whole process all the way from start to finish?
We go start to finish.
Okay.
You're very welcome.
Robert, get one.
Yes, I think Commissioner Barrett actually answered one question regarding the low-income level. Also, we have a lot of habitat homes built here in Campbell County. Do y'all work on them?
There are some stipulations there within. If there is already a contingency time frame on that, they have to leave out of that. There, there's been a time or two where we have been able to help, but they're out, they're out of that compliance area.
Anything else? That's it.
Do you all have an engineer to come in and look at the house, put it all in, write into the specs, and put it out for bid for contractors to bid on it?
Engineer, no, but we do have a rehab coordinator. We have one on our staff that you can choose from, or we have worked with a rehab coordinator that is out of Burness County. And he actually comes in and completely, he is approved through THDA, because they, there's a complication, so they have to make through THDA. They go in, do a complete work write-up, he does an estimate, the bids are secured, we have to have three bids through that. We talked about bids earlier. We have to have three. And so we come in, we try to find this contractor recruitment, we do that, we handle the contracts and the whole, literally, first thing.
So if the bid goes over $25,000, they have to be a licensed contractor?
They do, they have to be a licensed contractor regardless.
Regardless?
Yes.
Which I've done a lot of these before.
Yeah.
So I know if, if a bid comes in high, and then you all, can you all go in and say, okay, this don't need to be done, we'll do over that, they'll lower the bid down or?
The, right now bids are, it's a little crazy with the cost and stuff. But from what our inspector comes in and gives us an estimate, those bids have to be within 10% of his. If they're over that, then we actually go through a whole re-bid process, which the inspector does kind of go in and say, this can't come out, this can't come out. So he picks...
So as long as you get one bid, so you've got a cap of 30?
If either two are over and I've got one, we can run it.
Okay. Because I've bid on before, I don't want this job, so I blow mine up.
Yeah.
And then I'm way out of half.
We have, we have a couple that, you know, if they're busy, they'll give a compliment through you.
Right.
And kind of overshoot it, but, but yeah.
Okay. I'm good.
We've had good experience so far.
Yeah, okay.
30 minutes. Well, I'm gonna ask for an extension for another 30 here, let's do this, people. If you have a question, go ahead. You good? Okay. Shannon?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Good, you're very welcome.
This proposal, this grant proposal will be brought to us Monday night?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
I recommend it.
Okay. Who will, who will be carrying this? Rusty?
I don't know.
Okay.
This one carry it, I don't care.
Lacy carry it.
No, I'm good.
Go ahead. I'm getting frustrated.
I ain't gonna do it.
This one will be carrying your grant, okay? Monday night.
Rusty.
Aaron?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Could I have you and my panel to be the primary presenter? Cause I'm here to support this proposal, so I'm answering questions.
What about Tim?
Yeah.
Tim, come on up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Is he a pastor?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Tim Howell, CEO of Senior Citizens Home Assistant Service. And we're a nonprofit here in Tennessee that serves older adults in their homes. We hire caregivers, we train them, and we send them into the homes to help them do things that they can't say do in their own, such as cooking, cleaning, bathing, all of those, all of those homemaker type activities. And the, the nonprofit started in 1970, and we submitted a grant to you all, and we started in Campbell County in 2004. I mean, Aaron back there, he, the resource agency asked us to come up here and provide our services here. And we've been doing that. We, we got Melinda, she's, Melinda Perry is our local director here. And she lives here in this community, and she's got 11 good caregivers that go into these homes, these over builts and help them. And they are all over this county and doing, doing the tasks that we do for these folks and students in their homes. And whatever it said, when the pandemic started about two years ago, we decided to implement a shopping program. And we go out and older adults can call us, if you're 60, you can, over 60, you can call us and give us a grocery order. And we will take it over the phone, or you can email it in to us if you got a computer access, cause they don't. And we'll go out and we'll pick up their groceries so they don't have to get out and run the risk of getting COVID and then deliver it to them. And with that, we've been able to get some funding from the state of Tennessee again. Aaron helped us do that, Aaron Braden back there. So we've got some grants to where we can actually purchase some groceries for lower-income adults, so that way we can help them get that. And then y'all know these older adults that are living on $800,000 social security checks, and they can't own them, and the cost of food has really skyrocketed. And we can also get, not necessarily, but we get through this grant. It's amazing, we actually can get poetry items, we can get other things like that that they need, cleaning supplies and so forth to help keep their home clean. And we're able to, to do that for those folks that are lower income. And then we also started during this time a transportation program within the last two years to get them to doctor's appointments and so forth. Of course, Aaron's Creek does that, the East Tennessee Human Resource Agency does that. But one thing different about our company is that caregivers can go with these folks. And we can cross county lines, we can even take like veterans over into, some of them have to go to Johnson City for some of their doctor's appointments and things like that. And so we can even take them that far if we need to. And we take and, do I get 30 minutes? I never...
You, you're fine, go ahead.
Okay.
So we can take them wherever they need to go, and our caregiver's with them the whole
time in that car. And, and it can be to doctor's appointments, it can be to banking appointments, it can be to, I've been driving them around and doing things with them, and Melinda drives them around and does things with them up here. I do it in Knox County, I live in Knox County. But we, it's been a great program to serve some folks that have lost their resources. And I guess what we've seen is some gaps in resources for older adults have cropped up during the pandemic, and, and they're struggling to get those gaps filled so that they can get the things they need done. And we specifically wrote a grant to you all, and we talked to Mayor Morton, to see if we could get some funding to purchase a vehicle. One of our challenges is, Melinda uses her vehicle up here, but we've got some other counties that have helped us out in getting vehicles. And when we can get those vehicles, it allows our caregivers to have something to drive to do this, and it allows us to be able to serve more folks. We do require that if you're driving a vehicle for us, you have a certain insurance level. And we also, we don't have any caregivers here that have gotten their vehicle personally approved to do that because you've got to pass an inspection with us and so forth. And so we would like to be able to purchase a vehicle and use it here in this county to serve those folks for transportation purposes and for the grocery shopping purposes, to get them their groceries into their home and to get all those things that they need done. So that would be our grant proposal, is to be able to serve our older adults in Campbell County that don't have access to some of those things currently, and be able to serve them a little bit better than what we're doing, and have more people to do that than just Melinda who's doing it right now.
You ready to entertain some questions?
He said to tell you that through the ARP funds, I guess it's a one-time request for that car?
Okay.
It's a one-time request for that car, and we would maintain the insurance on the car, we would maintain all the stuff on the car, we just want to get the people to help with this.
You ready to entertain some questions?
Yeah.
Who has questions? Mr. Gordon, who else?
Yet to have.
Just wait a second. Mr. Gordon, Mr. Ors, Mr. Kids. Go ahead, Mr. Gordon.
Yet to have chauffeur license.
Do we have to have a chauffeur?
Do yet to have. Drive it.
No, sir, we do not. We're just driving folks in normal cars, we don't have any type of thing like that. And we would buy that, we would purchase that car from a local dealer here, by the way, it would not come out from somewhere else.
Did I get to a score?
I see.
For score?
Well, this is actually directed toward him, but I think the mayor brought this to the attention, right? When are you gonna purchase your new vehicle? We gave you the money for it, and give them your old vehicle.
The build date is worth a lot.
So are they a possibility, instead of trading that in, just give them that vehicle and let them use that?
Well, I've got another nonprofit that's required consideration.
Well, I mean, we're down on our ARP funds till we get this next phase through, so...
Well, it could be next phase, but the final guidance...
I mean, are they needing it now?
Just hit the street. Well, they are needing it.
Who's the other, other company or organization that's needing a vehicle?
Ridgewood Volunteer Fire Department.
And they need a, a personal vehicle?
They need a vehicle to go to training.
Okay. Nothing against them, but I mean, if our elderly is hurting, then I think that ought to take priority, but that's me. So there's a possibility we could actually, when you get your new vehicle, we, the county commission can actually, and that's a question for Joe.
I think so.
Are they a nonprofit?
What?
Are they a nonprofit organization?
Yes.
Or they a state organization?
I, I would not feel good about putting our seniors in that vehicle with...
I mean, don't get me wrong, but I mean, we've been using a vehicle. If it's not been unsafe, we shouldn't have been driving it anyway. But I mean, beggars can't be choosers. I mean...
Well, we're not begging. The final guidance for the ARP has just come out, so where nonprofits can come and talk through about it. So if there is a second iteration, I think it's on, that's one of the intents.
And this, and I said this from the start, when we first got this money, it's a blessing and courage.
You did.
You know, and the commission's made decisions how to spend it, and it's, and nothing gets you all, but we continue having the same conversation each month. And, and I'm for it, that's why I brought up, hey, let's use the mayor's old vehicle and do what we can with it. But anyway.
Kids?
Tim, I want to thank all of you guys for coming here tonight. This actually touches quite a bit home to me, elders. I always said, if you can't help your elders and the children, you don't need to be any kind of public office. My question to you is simple. Tim, have you checked on, you know, what, what it would cost you to get about what you're wanting for the seniors, you know, to do what you all need to do? And are you all, are you just wanting, are you wanting, are you all helping just seniors? And are you also maybe a possibility helping the disabled people too? Is that, are you putting it all, all of them together to help?
I know the grants that we get through EFR, and again, some of the, the funding the paper, the caregiver, when they come and drive them, come in through like an EFR grant right now. So their grants require a person to be 60 or over. Not to say that we couldn't help the younger disabled person, that we would have to work on that, and I couldn't necessarily build EFR back, but we do have younger folks that we serve this year, that's, that's not a problem. But the funding, cause again, we've already kind of got that grant that pays our caregiver to drive and tow them, but we pay them all.
Now, have you checked into what, what you're, what you're needing for this, for the seniors, what kind of particular vehicle? And what kind of cost are we talking about?
So I think we wrote the grant for $20,000, but we would love to have something that's got a warranty under it, so that way like five years from now, we're not continuing to put any money into this. We will pay the insurance cost and the gas cost and all those things. But it would be great to have something.
Is it disability, disability accurate for, you know, the vehicle gonna be for seniors, you know?
If you get a...
Say like a, like a wheelchair or something like?
Yeah, you get a wheelchair, then it's gonna go way above that. We bought a couple, we got some grants, and they, they go to about $30,000, $50,000 range when I remember purchasing.
So 20,000 just basic then?
It's gonna get a car, a van, a minivan, and get them in there. The people that I have escorted, if they have a wheelchair or if they have a walker or something, you just fold that up and you put it in, and you get them into the vehicle, you know, get in, and when you get to the place you're going, you get that wheelchair back in. And, and you know, I don't, I can tell you stories about a lot of the folks that were getting transported, but I saw one, a woman, a man, carrying his wife who had a stroke down steps to get them to the vehicle so that they can get to doctor's appointment. And my role is to take them to doctor's appointment, and so I did. It was, I was just dumped down. That one fellow, I mean, he did it, and I was... It's horrible for me to say, six foot four sitting there watching this, but if I would have got hurt, they would, we can't, we're not allowed to lift over 50 pounds. And she couldn't get her wheelchair wrapped in, she couldn't get her wheelchair, wheelchair, cause they were all backward. And I helped, I helped the woman up, and we walked down the steps so that we could get down the steps. But this is amazing what these folks are going through to get to a doctor's.
So in this particular situation, you're telling this body, it sounds like to me you're helping seniors and other people, you probably need something like, sort of like a van or something. Is that about fair enough to say?
If you get it too high, they can't get at it. If you get it too low, you have a hard time getting them out of it. It would be better like, you know, somewhere around an SUV or something in that area.
Okay.
Because they do, they do challenge to get in and out of things, and you're pulling and pushing and all that kind of stuff. The more, the easier you can get it, the better.
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Tim Polichko. Zach?
I'm just curious, have you all reached out to the cities to see if they're interested in helping?
To the city?
Yeah. Well, we'll follow at Jacksboro, Caraville, Jellico.
I've not personally reached out to them. Normally that's not, you can think, and again, I knew ARP, but there are some counties that have done this and helped us, and we got a vehicle in their place. And normally the counties like this get that, larger cities do, I know.
Actually, all cities are getting ARP allocations.
Are they getting it all?
Yes. They're getting, theirs is significantly smaller than ours, but they're getting an allocation.
While left, mayor. I will entertain a motion to extend for another 30 minutes.
I will say that...
Just a second.
Make a motion.
A motion, seconded by Marlowe, to extend for another 30 minutes. Roll call.
The cities do want you to use it in their city, and they can fund it, and that's a countywide project, and that's one reason we just don't have the city.
Charles Beard?
Yes.
Dwayne Beard?
Yes.
Johnny Bruce?
Yeah.
Ralph Davis?
Yeah.
Michael Douglas?
Yes.
Yes.
Robert Higginbotham?
Yes.
Scotty Kids?
Yes.
Clifford Colmeyer?
Yes.
Lisa Lester?
Yes.
Zachary Marlowe?
Yes.
Soonance?
Yes.
Russ York?
Yes.
Scott Stifel?
Yes.
14 yes.
We extend for another 30 minutes, I'm sorry. What I need, are you proposing a grant that you'll submit to us?
I didn't submit it to the mayor on that.
Oh, you have?
Yes.
Before he needs any money.
Yeah, that's true. He would have... The only thing I'm going to do right now is put it on for next month.
It has...
But it has budget finance.
Mr. Chairman.
It's a budget amendment, it's not a grant.
The only reason my vehicle request came here is because we require all contracts to be approved by the commission. My vehicle is funded within my budget. You did not appropriate for my vehicle.
Tim, what we'll do is we'll look at that and everything and make a decision to send it to budget finance.
If it involves ARP funds, it has to go through the Infrastructure Committee before it goes to budget and finance.
Yes, sir.
For sent to the government's way of...
Since he got... Can I speak? Okay. So you might want to... Mayor, y'all might want to reach out to, especially the city of Lefalit, because it's senior citizens there. Get their opinion, see if they can help in any way too.
Okay. Ralph?
Mr. Mayor, although that's in your budget, you don't own it. Anything can't be done through his... Anything that taxpayers buy, you have to bring it before this committee to approve to get rid of. You just, it ain't yours.
By contract.
No, no.
For a contract, I've got to bring it too.
If you give that vehicle away, you have to bring it before this committee.
Sure.
Well, what you saying?
There's a surplus.
Right. Well, you were saying it...
And then offices have surplus to designated non-profits.
Robert, then Rusty.
Mr. Chairman, if this is going to come for the ARP funds, it's actually a budget amendment instead of a grant?
Yes, that is correct. Yes, that means we would have to look at it, and like I said, Zach, I would wrap, go to your committee, that's not just second, Mayor.
And I may be wrong, and I apologize, ma'am, but we did a budget amendment to buy you a vehicle. It was not already in your budget.
Right.
We put that money in your budget to buy a vehicle back...
Six months ago?
Yeah, it's been a while.
We rolled over money from where I went without a deputy mayor last year.
We took that money and bought Glenys' truck last year. But we put money... And I apologize, I'll find out tomorrow.
My budget.
But we put it in your budget, but...
At budget time, just like a due money book.
Tim, what I'm going to do is we'll send it to the Infrastructure Committee, and they'll look at the grant, and then it'll come from the grant to budget finance. So it'll be next month before we know any.
Do I need to come back?
If you wish.
I wish. You want to tell me that? Are you going to leave it?
If she has a part and stuff, she can leave with Amanda, and we can...
I'm the one overseeing it. It's huge.
Thank you.
Mayor? Mr. Chairman, not all ARP purposes are infrastructure.
No, but we...
So you're going to hear some difference.
But... But we made the recommendation to send it.
We passed... We passed a... I agree, not all ARP purposes are infrastructure related, but in, I believe, May of 2021, we passed a resolution that gave the Infrastructure Committee ARP oversight, because the majority of the expenses are related to infrastructure.
That is correct. So just, if you don't mind, leave us a call, and with Amanda, and we'll get to it, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you. Charles?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm sure you probably get here even before... Anyway, the... I wanted to present this tonight. The state of Tennessee is providing the county an opportunity for improvements to the health department. They are actually using their ARPA money for this purpose. The total that they're recommending is 450,000, of which the state is going to put 337,000. They do require a 25% match, up to 10% of what the total county's ARPA funding would be. The county match 25% is $12,500. $112,500. And basically, it may come out of the ARPA funding, or it could be out of the county fund, however. But in order to give the... It does require 25% match. Some of the things that we're looking at, we don't have our full plan in place, but some of the things that we're looking at is to enhance our front office, to give the ladies that work up in the front more room to work, as well as to give a little bit more social distancing in terms of, you know, we learned all that through COVID. So one of the things would be revamping the whole front office, trying to make that more... But the whole operation would be to look at how we can make our operation more efficient in this process of looking at this. And what it would be, it would require, part of this would require the county to appoint an architect to develop the plans. We have a state person who is a prior contractor who kind of oversees all these grants. He would be involved in this process, and helping us to look at our facility, assessing it, and then coming up with a plan on how we can remodel to best make it more efficient for not only our patients, our customers, but also for our operation as a whole, so...
So what you're asking, you're also asking the same as them, to take some of our ARP funds to as a matching grant?
It may be, the county may use AR money to do that, but it doesn't necessarily have to be.
In saying that, then, I'm going to Zach?
It needs to go through the grounds before it ever reaches infrastructure, if it reaches infrastructure.
So you want it to go through the grounds first?
Yes.
Can you take it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can I add a thing to this, Joey? In order, the state is, I know this is a conference, I know it doesn't show all of the county, always amiable to county, but they are looking to try to fix a few of these contracts by April. Okay. So I don't know how that plays into the timeline, and I'll be glad to attend any meeting to try to answer any questions that I can, if you'll let me know who's doing and when. Mr. Davis, when are you going to do your next full moon grant?
So this needs to be done by April?
They would like to have the contracts in place by April, is my understanding.
All right. So if I schedule meetings, say, for next Thursday? And... But you'd have to bring, you have to get all your information, a drawing, and, you know, I mean, that's...
That's going to be, that's going to be tough. I don't know that I can have that much detail by that time of month, so...
Which is going to be over $50,000, so you'll have to have architects, so...
Correct.
So we can still have a meeting, you can bring us all the information that, you know, we can, but we can't approve money-wise until we know how much it is. And we can approve to get the work done, but...
Well, the state is proposing a 450,000 for renovations and have the health department, of which they're putting in 337,000. And the county match to that 25% would be $112,500. So that, I mean, that's the dollar amount of set for the project in for the renovation. I'm just going to have the details in terms of...
So you're wanting $112,000 from the county, or you need it?
What's in that?
That's how much you're going up to. It may come in at 300. It's 25% or what'd you say?
The match is 25%.
25% or whatever the bid's going to turn out to be. Because I mean, I'm just going...
Basically, what we would try to do with the gentleman that I mentioned, the words with the state, any renovations that we do, we would try to manage that...
To use all of it?
...at 450,000. Does that make any sense?
Yes, you want to make sure you're going to spend every dime that you can get.
Mr. Davis, you'll go ahead and set your meeting?
But let's...
We're just going to...
Yes, 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 sir.
Once it comes out of your meeting, Zach, you'll entertain it in the infrastructure?
If it's approved and if they request ARP funds, because I mean, there might be another funding source.
But I want to make sure we got the committees right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We pick it back? He's saying April.
Yeah, sure.
He's saying April, so, you know, this is February.
It'll be 6:30 on the next... I won't be free next Thursday till 6:30, but...
Well, that's fine with me. I can do 6:30.
All right, 6:30 then. Next Thursday, Charles, I'll deal with you.
As far as I know, yes.
Rusty, you have a question?
Is this a project that's come down from the state or just from a local health department?
The... It came from the state, as far as...
So the state's recommending this to be done in our county? The state's recommending this being done in our county?
They have...
Multiple counties.
Actually, it's basically, they're providing money to all, if I'm not mistaken, 95 counties, because I know the 89 rural counties...
And the state's want you to reach out to each county for the ARP funding, for the match? Is that what they're telling us? The state's recommending, the state health department?
The state health department said that the county may use the money for that. The state is getting their money from the ARP money. The state is saying that the county may be...
And under this second portion, and Zach may know the answer to this, this falls under that same criteria on the second portion of money that has to have a numbers system set up, a scorecard. On the second ARP funding, there's a scorecard that falls in place in it.
There is for the water.
And there, I think there's going to be for all of it, is my understanding. Because they're recommended to us to hire an entity, and we, I think we hired East Tennessee Development District for the first part, to do the scorecards for us. We'll find out. We'll dig.
Charles? They'll set the meeting, it'll be a joint meeting with the building of ground, the Infrastructure Committee, and at that time, you'll have a good idea of, you know, what's going on, what we need to proceed with.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Don?
I assume y'all got the report for the fire station?
Yes.
For four years? Have any questions?
It's self-explanatory. Mr. Kitt, you have a question?
Yeah, can you go into small detail real quick, brush us up a little bit?
The county kept getting bombarded by people on fire stations, and I kept saying, the state has a system. They'll come in and do an evaluation, so you've got a technical document that you can say, no, this is where we need to build it at.
You just can't build them anywhere.
County called me this four years ago, and it kept coming up with some, one area in the county, and I kept saying, y'all only agreed to the resolution. I'll do the labor, and work with them. Y'all agreed, yeah, we need to do that. So worked for about a year with Kell Mile, University of Tennessee, and we got the project done, and regulated three fire stations, one at F Valley School, one at Minnehaber Shale School, and one at Bailey at Flat Hall. And it's based on population, what the county population can afford to serve the most people. It's not going to encompass everybody's household within a five mile radius. But it's going to get the largest proceeds for the dollar value, what the county can afford.
I appreciate that. I'm going to tell you something, really, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah, there's a lot of work. We've done a lot of work.
And I appreciate that. Anything else?
Y'all have any other questions on anything else? I just want to make sure the report got out, and everybody understood, so now you've got something you can go back to when people are saying, hey, we need a fire station here, we need a fire station now, and now we have to study this.
I think the mayor has a question. We need to look on the question about CPG. It's already, I think Mr. Kitts is carrying it now.
The match is 46,500, I think.
And you're coming up with that match, and you're...
Yes.
Like, as always. Okay. But it was, it failed to get it last year because of the consequences.
Mitch sent me the documents, and they funded nine projects. We were number 10, visited by nine months. Mitch talked to the guy, he said he was confused when I looked at what we done the proposal for, and then what Mitch finally seen it, and then I looked at the writing, there was the confusion, and I see what the confusion was.
Yeah, and I'd ask some questions about it, Don, because every year we have a different entity that wants it. And if there's nobody else got the other entity, I'm all for it.
It's, this one's going to replace our last truck, our 1992 model?
And you do a good job at it. You have to keep a lot of good fleet up.
Mr. Kitts is carrying it, so it should be taken care of Tuesday night.
All right.
Thank you, sir. No, appreciate it.
Thank you, Don.
Hey, thank you for staying with us. You're better than me. Ms. Rhonda Longbar, please come up.
I thought you said we're ready to adjourn.
And I'm here on behalf of the Chamber. I've been in this county a really long time. I was gone for a few years, but I'm actually living in this county, and I'm also a patient of the county. I know how much work they do, of projects, really, really. I was like a lawyer, you said, and I'm always trying to pack them, and I'm working right now. And I put a packet together with Missy's help. As y'all know, I was in transition with Missy, and I remember, I was on the team that helped put together the interviews, and we interviewed for days to get Missy. And she had been at Chet, I think, for 27 years? 27 years, and we feel like we got a good one in her, and she's doing a nice job. She's actually representing the Chamber, and right now, retired Tennessee. And I don't want to refer to take everything that's in the packet, but I gave y'all a lot of information, and I helped you put it together so you have it. The Chamber's been busy this year, they have 290,000, 230,000. We have membership levels, which is in there, and businesses that are in the joint. We have all, we drive, we require a bit of fundraising, and we have the annual dinners that we do in June, and they've been a lot of time through the doors of the country. We couldn't be, I'm off since this past year, we've been really a busy one, directing the first part. We've got several grants this year, and at our lunch and lunch, we've got lunch and lunch, and then get two things, and then ask your own questions. We've had member buyers, we've had Little Ten Shines, we're really coming to new businesses in town. That's anywhere in the county we've been. We have business after Alabama and Williams. We try to make sure we got a community person on our list, and we're looking for that right now. We have different people that love turning off, and currently 16 members, our president, Ryan Thomas, who's John Paul Wilkinson, a great guy. And anyway, we have, we do retire kids, we've got grants from tour rail, Karen kind of does a tour, and we have the following committees, executive personnel, membership, tourism, membership retail, events and manufacturing. And you can see through this packet, all the things that Missy has done this year. I give her a hands down, you know, the question for, I don't think I mentioned where 501C, where 501C 36. So we're a nonprofit by nature, we're just under a six instead of a three. We're 501C, six, not a three. Anyway, I would ask if you all have any questions? This is me, and I'm just saying this for me. I asked to come and speak because I'm probably the longest person being involved in the Chamber of Commerce. There's three things I'm proud of, and Mr. Ed Wheeler got me involved in it, and I'm very proud of helping him. Most things, Ron State Committee College on the Foundation, I'm also a banker, that's not what I'm proud of. I'm proud of the Ron State, I'm on that foundation, I've raised money for that all the time. I'm proud of being a Chamber board member, and being chairman of that this coming June. And at the Rosebud Club, I'm one of those things, I'm a member of the Rosebud Club. So those are the monitoring projects, the programs that I work in, and if I work on something, I work at it, and feel, that's what I do. So I volunteer to speak because I know how important a business it is for a Chamber of Commerce election, and for you guys, who we appreciate so much for helping us out, because we, you know, raise money. I'm also part of the Anderson County Chamber. I've been on board of the Stock Committee, and most recently, I've been helping Bell County get reestablished. So I've worked with a lot of chambers in the last five years, and I went to the annual dinner, and the one that we've done, without regularity, to help us reset the whole county chamber up, he's having a sister teaching plan, and we'll be back at it next week. So welcome to come to our meetings anytime you'd like, or owe them to the public. And we've got him helping us because he's done a great job in Anderson County. And so we just ask somebody, we don't have to live in the will, we got him coming to help us. And so I just want to tell you how proud I am to be a part of that Chamber, and we've worked with it so many years, because I've been around a long time, so that makes sense. I'd ask if there's any questions?
Just a second. Rhonda, I'd like to thank you for coming today.
Sorry y'all be here all day.
And stay so long with us, but hey, usually we wrap things up, and we had several people people that had things to talk about tonight, so, but in saying that, I'm sure that several commissioners have questions for you, so you'll entertain a question? Mayor, I think you were the third, anybody else?
Just one note on funding balance, when you see the Chamber reports, you're gonna see a $75,000 plus up that is a pass-through from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services to replace the up tower. And you're gonna see another $75,000 plus up to complete the trail up through there. So the Chamber didn't all of a sudden get a bunch of money dumped in at their discretion, they're providing pass-through, we provided pass-through.
She wrote the check today.
So, and that's part of what a 501(c)(6) allows you to do, and we've done that quite a bit, so it's not like we're sitting on copper there.
It says that Russell is a, is a resident person, and she's coming today, she wrote the check today for the up tower. So we got-
Anything else, Mayor? Okay, let's see, I've got Scotty, then Rusty, Ralph, anyone else? I need, I need, I need to know, Matt, you're gonna speak. Zach? Anyone else? Okay, Scotty, you have four.
Glad you came, we appreciate you coming to Portmore tonight, and thank you for such a great job you've always done on the Chamber of Commerce. My question to you is, you've been here all your life, for most people that don't know, you're Whit Gones's niece.
My name is Ito.
And that's actually something to be proud of. The question I have for you, you probably know I'm a big promoter of the county, we like to promote, you know, if we don't have promotion, people cut in, we don't have revenue. Have you thought about, the Chamber thought about it in the past, or maybe recently, something that we can do to bring more people into the county, I'm sure that's things you all have talked about before?
Missy's in a meeting right now in New York, that she's doing that, and that was part of the grant that we had to agree to go somewhere, and they asked for specifically down there, and I was saying, from my job perspective, we have a ton of people in the county, and I will say this, as a banker, we closed $110 million in volumes last year. I love Reese Tennessee, at the most that we've ever done, that's how, how busy it is, it's really dramatic.
Hopkins gets his money back.
We have a great, I-
Well, I want to say again, thanks again for all the hard work the Chamber does, and you personally, and we appreciate you.
Well, thank you much.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Rusty?
And I appreciate you coming down too, and I'll make it quick. I talked to Missy the other night after the joint economic development meeting, and I know you guys are promoting Campbell County, and the county commission is always funding to promote Campbell County. And there's other people, other entities, other businesses that does the same thing, and we're appreciative, I think you guys do a great job. There's something I'd like to see that's, as an endeavor, if it's possible, and maybe we can actually kind of team up and get some other money to go along with it. And we've talked about the compactors tonight, and we've got some nice canisters, honestly, right now, and I'd like to see, let's team up together and put billboards on those canisters, because they're running up and down 75, and promote Campbell County. I mean, you see a lot of traveling billboards, and that would be a great, you know, I know you guys put money into billboards, and that's good, and that's great, because they're stationary and people sees them. But it might be something we can team up with and come up with an idea, something about that.
Tell them any ideas, we do, you just tell us what you're thinking.
And, and I'm not saying you guys fund it, but, you know, we could be a partially funded there, sourced there, and I don't want you guys to put in the advertisement, but, and hopefully that the county commission, and I would like to see more meetings that could be held of the evening, that some of us could attend. It's about impossible for me, myself, to walk off from the utilities with a job to do, and I'm sure a lot of people has that same point.
We would like to know.
I think you guys have one a year, I think toward the fall, I'm talking about of the evening.
An annual meeting is done at night, and that's usually what we go over, is what you just saw. I went to one in Anderson County, I represented the Ron State Foundation on Thursday, and they actually charged, but we made the charge, and I said, Rick's one of the things he's helping us, but we did the state annual meeting at night, and we were probably done that year, and we usually do various achievements on it.
I've been to one in the Pice, it's been a while, and it's, and it's hard sometimes.
This last year, we had over 250 people come out, and we did, we raised money for the pig rust this year, and that was over $14,000, it's the most successful we've had in many, many years.
And they used to do them up at the Ball, well, not the Ball Farm, but the Myers Farm.
Yeah, and that's what we normally do, that's what we had this last, well, we actually had it there, and we had pig rust out at, out of town, all of it, all of it.
Carlott's Place, they used to do it when they first, when I first come on commission, and they used to-
Friday night, Thursday, I was the next.
Yeah, but anyway, I mean, there's, I think you guys are doing a great job, just keep it up, and if we can help you, we just like to be informed sometimes.
Yes, June the ninth, you said the chair reminded me that we're having, I just have to have somebody keep up with me, we're gonna have around June the ninth, so, at any minute. So we'll make sure everybody gets a call and a notification.
And I know it's election year, and I apologize, because there's stuff being scheduled that I don't even know, these cakes and these pie dinners, we had to get up and give all these, give all these speeches and try to build support. Johnny's cut me off, thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Kitt? Uh, Zach?
Okay, first off, thank you for being here, I certainly appreciate the work that the Chamber does, and I think it's certainly moving in a good direction, and thank you for the report, it's certainly very informative, I read through it this weekend.
We try to feel for a lot of people.
One of the things I do want to, and I don't have any ideas to how to approach it, but one of the things I do want you all to focus on, and I'd be willing to open that, I do want you all to look at, how are we helping young professionals? I think that that's certainly a lag in our county and our community, and I don't know how to fix it, but it's certainly something I would like to take a look at.
We have leadership classes, I don't know if I'll teach you.
Right.
And I went to, and my husband and I were first there, and our kids were young, we went in the mountain all the time. Well, I had to get there, because I did leadership, about five years ago I did leadership, and I was amazed at some of the stuff we had. So we've tried to do a lot with leadership, you know, for the younger people, but we also have, have young people on board. We have Brandon Johnson, he just rotated off, and he's heading up, you know, the park here at Carroll, so we've got, we try to get, you know, people to do their brother and younger, and sometimes we're successful and we're not, but it's really good, but if you like, if you like to volunteer for any things, we'd welcome it. You want to, yeah.
Forty-five? Anything else, Zach?
I'm good.
Plus, I know you're old.
Zach is our oldest.
Okay.
No, I'm old. I'm glad to spend your time.
Glad to see you again, Rhonda. I feel, yeah, I feel responsible that you're here. When Missy was here a couple months ago, I brought up about making brochures individually, put up in, here locally in town when people's here, I know, like I said, when my wife's out of town, going somewhere, you know, we pick up something there in that town that we could go do, you know, go in a cave or whatever, but I don't find that here.
We have some, I'm not sure what.
Where they put them, but, but I brought up the next month about putting two commissioners on the Chamber, they used to be.
We never had it in all years of it.
You haven't, okay, well, that's my understanding, you know, I'm sorry.
It's all political, we can't be, we can't be political enough.
He's on it.
Well, he was our mayor as a board member, under William Baird, and we've had it for mayors, and we've had both mayors in the past, all the city mayors, and that could be it. And when William Baird was mayor, I guess is when that changed, but he's on as a, as a board member, just like me, like the board member.
Okay, all right, but I think something got tuck out of contents with one of my comments, that the mayor wanted to know, why do I want two on, two members on there? And I said, well, maybe we want to see who they're going hard and for, and he says, why you want to fire Missy for? And I said, I don't want to fire nobody. But I, see if you've heard this rumor, the rumor in the fall, a rumor, I'm just asking you a question, you don't have to finish it, the rumor is if the mayor loses the race, you guys are gonna reappoint him back and get rid of her. Now, that's the rumor in town, that's why I asked that. But if he loses the mayor's race, he's gonna be, you guys are gonna replace him back.
You think you make a replacement?
I'm asking you if you heard that rumor?
I've heard that rumor.
Okay, well, then I'll ask you another rumor. And I've heard this one for a long time, and matter of fact, the gentleman that was on that committee, at one, at one time, he verified it, but I'm gonna give you his name. But when the mayor left the chamber, and has cleaned out his desk, there were several uncashed, undeposited checks that was left in his drawer that was made out to the Chamber, people's news, that they-
I really can't answer that, because I mean, you know, I didn't do the day-to-day operations with the Chamber, and I actually kind of do it publicly, so.
Well, I mean, I, okay, well, I'm just saying, that was, that was a rumor that, I believe in the hearing, the hearing, so if he wants to clarify, he can, but that was just a rumor that they were bankrupt, and they had a lot of checks that wasn't, gave to y'all. Okay, that's, that's all. But I appreciate you coming, pardon?
That's quite a rumor.
You're right, yeah, yeah.
Mayor, you wish to respond to that?
I don't want to be the Chamber Director.
Okay.
That's not a problem. But I don't know, you might check with your attorney about making statements in public means that aren't verified.
I asked a question, I just asked a question.
No, you're specifically citing a rumor. Mr. Kitt?
I'm done.
I've been audited in every position out there within the United States Congress by whatever the state of Tennessee regulates the chambers, we pass all audits, public money went to work.
And I also don't believe the E O wants to be the Chamber Director, I really don't.
Rhonda, thank you very much for coming, we appreciate you, we appreciate you people coming, also from the chambers, like the members have said, is there anything we can do to help you, please?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm, and he's a student right now.
Who, who is it?
Ryan Cummins, he's the, well, he runs-
My next good neighbor.
Really? Okay.
Good guy.
Rhonda, thank you.
Anytime.
Thank you. Guys, I'll say this, we might have went long tonight, but I'll say the meeting was a lot more civil, respectful, and come next Tuesday, I look for having about 30 minutes, but maybe.
I don't think there's anything else we can talk about.
There's nothing else we can talk about, that's it. I'll entertain a motion. Motion, yeah. Guys, have a good night. Good evening.
Yeah.